Pastor Morrell Gar from Cavalry Baptist will be doing the invocation today. And we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by, uh, by Mr. Baboa, our Commissioner Baboa. Or together if you could both do that for us.
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first we thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. We thank you, God, for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you, Lord, for life itself, for the measure of health, the need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. God, we thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We thank you as well to the freedoms that we embrace from you and the freedoms to serve you in spirit and in truth. Now, Father God, I pray that you would bless this meeting, that you would bless these officials, that all that is done is done to the glory of your name. In Scripture, you have said that citizens are to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, God, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking you that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of our times. I ask that you give them, God, the peace and the understanding to meet the needs of these thy people. And I ask, God, that even when they agree to disagree, that they can do that in harmony, realizing that it is because of you that we live, that we move, and that we have our being. So, God, now bless this agenda, that everything is done is done to the glory and edification of your name, that we can be a blessing to this city and we can be a blessing to all that we serve in this city. In your name we pray and we praise. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Can both Mr. and Mrs. Baboa?
First before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, we would like to dedicate this Pledge of Allegiance to the Hothorn Police Officers present and in your own duty now and forever. So, place your flag and over your parrot and repeat with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Batero. I'm sorry, no. Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Montero.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here. Okay, um, thank you all for being here. Um, the weather's just going haywire. It gets hot one day and then it's cold the other and it's like, the universe can't make up its mind. So, I don't know. I don't know if it's a sign of anything, but you know, we can handle it, right? Still better than a lot of other parts of the world, right? So, we got it. We have it really good. So, our first item tonight is the annual fireworks drawing, which will be led by Shannon McMurray and Kim Johnson uh, from the licensing department. Uh, ladies, can you please come up here? Definitely interested in seeing how it works this year because a lot of other cities are taking a different view on this, but let's see if we can make it successful this year.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll draw the three qualifying candidates in the order they will choose their firework booth location. To start, we have Hawthorne LAX Rotary Club. And then we have Del Air Baptist Church. Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Lastly, we have District 37 Little League Baseball.
Ladies, can you tell us how many positions they're gonna, locations they are?
How many locations? Right now, there's seven available locations.
Okay.
Oh, these are the only ones, all of them. That's, yeah. There used to be eight, but... Eight locations, but only seven.
Okay. Ellis Vanna White. Okay, let's see. So, the first one that will get to choose their location is going to be Del Air Baptist Church. What?
Oh, the ladies out there.
Yeah. Congrats to Pastor Jefferson. The second. The second one is going to be District 37 Little League Baseball. Yay. Next, we have Hawthorne LAX Rotary Club.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, please? Licensing, can you explain the pre-numbers one through three, why they're chosen and why they have their locations?
Yes, so we have an ordinance where they're grandfathered in, so they automatically get a location and a guaranteed spot every year. And their locations have always been set for where they're located. Um, I believe we have it at Northgate Ralph's. And my apologies, I'm not familiar with the last location.
Thank you.
It's our veteran organizations, so our veterans get priority. Yay.
Okay, and then lastly, we have Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce.
Yay.
So, we just asked that candidates, candidates meet us in the lobby in order to select your locations.
Coffee's good.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. All right, we do have a, we do have a second presentation. And Director Eric Lamkin will be doing the presentation of the Good Neighbor Award.
And remaining council members. Will the following people please stand when I call your name? K-9 Officer Dolan. Adrian Gerardo. Irvin Gomez. Alex Sanchez. Robert Daniels. Luis Gonzalez. And Jose Gutierrez. Thank you. Please remain standing. Council, today I want to take a moment to recognize an extraordinary act of courage and public service that took place on the morning of March 25th, 2025. When a house caught on fire in our community, it wasn't fire or police who first arrived on the scene. It was our very own Public Works Department. These men didn't hesitate. They saw danger and they ran toward it, not away from it. Robert Daniels was the first to spot the smoke, and thanks to his quick thinking and action, the rest of the crew was able to respond rapidly. Robert, along with Luis Gonzalez and Alex Sanchez, grabbed the fire extinguishers and tried to contain the fire until emergency responders arrived. At the same time, Irvin Gomez, Adrian Gerardo, and K-9 Officer Dolan assisted in evacuating the residents, including helping rescue an elderly man in a wheelchair from the burning home. Jose Gutierrez stayed on the line with the emergency dispatchers, ensuring fire and police could get there as quickly as possible. Because of their bravery, their teamwork, and their selfless commitment to others, lives were saved that day. To Robert, Irvin, Adrian, Luis, Alex, Jose, and Officer Dolan, on behalf of the City of Hawthorne and every resident who calls this community home, we thank you. Your actions are a powerful reminder of what true public service looks like. You are heroes, and we are proud to serve alongside you. Let's give these gentlemen a round of applause. If you would not mind, come to the center to get your certificate and take a picture with the council members, please.
Thank you, guys. Much appreciated all the effort that you guys do every day in our streets because, you know, the public works with orange shirts, you know, you guys are the best. And then the K-9 office, you know, we know our police department is one of the best in the nation, so, but it goes with the public's work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to all the employees. Definitely doing a great job. A lot is, a lot is being asked of you and you guys step up to the plate every single time. So, thank you, guys, and gals out there too, of course. Ma'am, the guidelines for oral communications and have you said, have you given me all the, all the slips? I only have one. Okay, thank you.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion of the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay, I only have one. They might not be filled out, but either way, Deborah Sturdivan, please. Love Beyond Autism.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas, council members, Mayor Protem, city attorney, city manager. I want to thank everyone for coming out to our second autism awareness walk. Um, I'm not just the face of Love Beyond Autism. We also have our VP, Aunt Maritha Matthews, and I have my program director, Darlene Daniels. Um, I want to thank everybody for coming out to the walk. It was amazing. It was pouring, pouring down raining, but there were so many supporters that came and walked in the rain with us to show their support. Um, I, I just can't explain it. The people that was behind the scene, the city, the, the, the city, um... The city workers who put the stage and put everything together. Alex, who kicked the door in and opened for us. Kawana, who I bugged and emailed every day. You know, she kept me on board, she kept us straight. City Von, who's always been there. He was there, like, with his hat on, and he was walking for the cause. Thank you, Councilmember Katrina. She was there. There were so many people there, but I just can't express what it meant to us. And I want to turn it over to my director.
I'll keep this short. We do appreciate each and every person that made this happen. Because autism is on the rise, the goal is to inform the community and to bring resources to them. All of us have a child that's on the spectrum. We understand how hard it is to navigate, you know, taking care of your family and taking care of that particular child. So by having the walk, we're bringing in everyone, from our vendors, from our families, to let them know that they're not alone. And so your help in making this happen, we don't have the words. In the pouring rain, it was cold. Last year was, you know, we were sunny, we had over a hundred and something people that came out. A lot of the people were given information about what they could do to better serve their child. So we do appreciate you. We're looking forward to next year. We're praying that the sun will be shining, so that we don't have to be drenched in a picture. We did take some great pictures, hopefully you guys saw that. But we also want to thank all of the vendors. I think the police department was there as well. They have a program that you register your child. And so if the police are ever called out to your residence for whatever reason, then it's noted that your child has, you know, a sensory issue or the doorbell or whatnot, so thank you very much.
And as program directors, I just want to thank you very much for your time and for allowing us to have the walk in Hawthorne. And we look forward to many more walks in Hawthorne. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here and helping raise awareness for this very important issue. Lellie Fernandez, North Hawthorne Community Association.
Good afternoon, Council and City Manager and Attorney and Mayor. Lellie Fernandez, North Hawthorne Community Association. I would like to commend City Clerk Dana Hunter for the excellent notary services offered through the city. My citizens and I recently used the city service and were all impressed on how easy and accessible, efficient the whole process was. Dana was professional from welcoming and made the experience smooth from start to finish. It's a valuable resource for residents. I encourage anyone needing notary services to take advantage and come to City Hall with Dana. On a second note, I am here also respectfully want to like to clarify that I am speaking out not just for myself, but as a representative of North Hawthorne Community Association, a collective voice of residents who continue to face daily parking challenges in our neighborhood. While only a few of us may have spoken at council meetings, our concern reflects the reality of many ones, many more than just one. It's often stated that homeowners should park in their driveways, and that has been done. But why are parking directives and expectations consistently aimed at only the homeowners? What about apartment buildings with available onsite parking that goes unused? Or the auto shops that leave vehicles on residential streets for days at a time? These entities play a significant role in overcrowding of our street, yet little seems to be asked of them. Additionally, the T-markers that are placed in our areas were implemented without community input. While they may have offered a small improvement, perhaps around 10%, they have not solved the core problems. Vehicles are still being left on our streets for up to seven days, often by businesses or owners who do not live in the neighborhood, or car hoarders. And enforcement remains weak. Most importantly, I want to respectfully remind the council that this issue has been ongoing more than 10, 20 years, and it's getting worse every time, yet some of you have been sitting there for past eight years. And despite repeated community efforts to raise these concerns, no meaningful or lasting solutions have been put in place. We feel unheard and overlooked. Permit parking may not be a perfect solution, but it deserves a real discussion, not dismissal. Our neighborhood is not asking for special treatment. We're asking for fairness, accountability, and support by you, the council, the people that we have voted to be up there to do for us. The responsibility to improve the situation should not fall solely on homeowners while other contributors to the problems go undressed. Thank you for your time and continued service to the service. City, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address the City Council, please form a line.
Hello, okay. Ruben Sanchez with the North Hawthorne Community Association. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to start by saying we want to thank Mr. Akbar, DJ, and Vaughn. And the reason that we're going to thank you is because of the 120th Street. I don't know if you guys have been there, but it looks so nice. And not only that, they listen, even though it was a conversation, they knew there was common sense behind it, and they went ahead and put those up. What's it called, Keep Clear? Where they don't have any lights or so, it's like a cross street. That's something new that's going to help a lot with the commute in the morning and the evening. Thank you so much for that. Now, I wanted to also touch in regards of something that was talked about at the last council meeting, which is the preferential parking. I know that memory is the first thing to go when people get older, so I'll remind you, Mr. Mayor, that we...
Oh, my gosh.
Ten years ago, actually, April is the anniversary when we came here with a petition with hundreds of signatures for preferential parking. And during those 10 years, I believe Mrs. Angie English was the one who called for a moratorium, and only because the talk was getting a little louder. 10 years now, nothing has been done in regards of preferential parking. If you guys would have gone with preferential parking, I doubt that you guys wouldn't even need any kind of T-parkings. Now, to say that only like five or six people had come up here, it is ridiculous. Because there were signatures, hell, even your father was signed the petition, Mr. Vargas. Your brother walked the streets with us. Because we had a long, from side to side, North Hawthorne, all over, we had so many signatures. At that time, the interruption was going to be for the RFK Building. As everyone remembers, they were up to build some apartments. And so they could build a Disneyland for all we cared, as long as the residents would have had their parking. And that's one of the biggest reasons that they put this in the moratorium, to help apartment owners. Please do not be fooled. This comes down to supporting the apartment owners. Because the apartment owners are taking advantage of our streets. First of all, they charged their own tenants for using parking in their own facility. And now they're parking outside, and obviously, people don't want to pay $150 to $200 extra because they know that parking is a big issue. So, as you all know, I remember speaking with Arnie because of this petition, and he mentioned, and I want to make this clear, it only takes about 25 to 30% of the homeowners in every block to sign the petition in order to get preferential parking, which we did. And Mrs. Dana confirmed with the petition that was given 10 years ago, she just wiped off the spider beds because no one has done anything about it. But here we are 10 years afterwards, gray hair, memory lost. Take care, have a good night.
Oh, my God, okay, thank you, sir, thank you, thank you. All right, thank you, thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the City Council?
Evening, Mayor and City Council, Rodney Hawthorne. I don't know if you're aware, most people that I brought up tonight, nobody was aware of the fire that we lost. The restaurant on Rosecrans in... Rosecrans in Inglewood, I had to think of the street. Denny's at the Walmart parking lot burnt, caught fire over Mother's Day weekend. As most people know here, I'm recovering from cancer. I'm battling the fight of cancer right now. It's my second week battling it. I got the VA treating it, fighting it with me, so it's... I'm barely, hardly around in the city much since I've been battling this disease. But it was removed, but there's still parts that they're fighting, trying to kill, so... But yeah, Denny's at Rosecrans in Inglewood is no longer... It was a, I don't know if it's under investigation, so I can't say what it was. But I talked to the chief, and he said it was a grease fire that started the kitchen. It was totally wasted, totally gone, so hopefully they'll... I don't know where they moved the employees to. But I was there this morning, and it was totaled inside. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address their City Councils? Sir, ah, there he is, Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, city staff, and members of the community. Brian Markarian, Superintendent Hawthorne School District. And just want to say I had the honor to be present at the reopening of Zella Davis Park today. And just what a beautiful, fantastic facility and gathering place for our kids and for our families and for the community. So I want to express gratitude for that, for the investments that are made, the partnerships to make those spaces available for our kids. It's so important that they have them, and we're going to continue that, I know, on Saturday. Be present for the Jim Thorpe reopening as well with the Dream Field over there. So just so much appreciation and gratitude for that, as well as our partnerships as we continue with our Crossing Guard Program and our SRO, School Resource Officer, as well. And just also wanted to let you know that on Saturday after the Jim Thorpe ceremony there, we're going to have our Take Part Art Festival, which is at Losinger High School. It's a regional festival, so it'll be our district, as well as Lawndale, Lenox, Wiseburn, and Centineau Valley Union High School District. And we'll have our kids performing and dancing and singing, and their artwork will be on display. So that will start at 10:00 a.m. For anyone who's around, we'd love to have you join us and see all the talents that our kids have to showcase. Thank you. It's going to be this Saturday, so 9:00, I believe, the ribbon cutting at the field, and then 10:00 is the Take Part Art Festival. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to address the City Council? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed, ordered. City Clerk's consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I have eight items on the consent calendar. They're Items 3 through 10 for your consideration and approval. I'm actually going to break up Item 4 for the last time, so that we can vote on the minutes. Item 3, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, May 13th's agenda. Item 4, approval of the City Council meeting minutes for the regular meetings, meeting minutes of December 10th, 2024. Item 5, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 6, Resolution Number 8524, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy weed abatement assessments and setting a public hearing date on June 10th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. for such proposed assessments. Item 7, Resolution Number 8526, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy street lighting assessments for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and setting Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. as the time and date of a public hearing. Item 8, Resolution Number 8527, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2025, 2026, funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Item 9, Resolution Number 8528, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, recognizing May 10th as Dia de la Madres in the City of Hawthorne, California. Item 10, Resolution Number 8529, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, encouraging owners of multi-unit residential houses, housing complexes to prohibit the use of smoke, tobacco products, and residential units for adoption.
Point of private information? I'll just say something real quick. Mr. City Attorney, we were thinking the same thing. Are we allowed... Mr. City Clerk, did you break up Item 4?
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney, are we able to break it up, even though it's already listed as a specific item?
Yes, you could take it out.
Okay. Oh, take, so you're taking it off?
Vote separately, is that what you want to do?
Yeah, vote it separately. I read the one date that they can actually vote on, and then the next one she won't be able to vote on.
So she just wants to take it up separately, it could be done.
Okay.
To the chair, thank you. I'd like to pull Item 8 for discussion, please. And I'm good with everything else.
I'll make a motion on all items except 8.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in.
Discussion 8.
The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Discussion on 8.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask our city manager, with regards to the list of projects for the fiscal year that were funded, the Road Repair and Accountability Act, do we have that list made public to the community so that you could see not only the great work that the city's making, efforts on our infrastructure, especially our streets and roadways, but is there a list that can be either uploaded to our website and/or made available through our new chat box?
Absolutely. I'm not sure at this moment, but I can promise that we'll have one up tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I'd like to move on Item 8.
Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. Voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Going back to the minutes. Item 4, approval of City Council meeting minutes for the regular meeting of October 8th, 2024. Everyone except Councilwoman Johnson will be voting.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, for the clarification. I make a motion? Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. Voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Okay. Next, we have a bid opening. Madam Clerk, can you read Item 11, please?
Now is the time and place to declare... Oh, yes, I'm sorry, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for resurfacing of the runway 725 and resurfacing of taxiways and trench drain extension for Hawthorne Municipal Airport Project, Project 25-06. There was one bid received for American Road Maintenance, which was incomplete.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so she read the item, she's going to repeat it right now on the...
Item 12, now is the time and place for a public...
So, I'm sorry, ma'am, we'll make the move, we'll move on to the public hearings. So if you could read Item 12, and in the process, I think you could envelope Item 11 in there, please.
I'm sorry, repeat that, sir?
You could read Item 12, and then after, for our...
Item 12, now is the time and place for a public hearing, making a determination of public necessity, health, safety, or welfare, requiring the formation of the Underground Utility District on Doty Avenue from El Segundo to 126th Street. No written communications were received.
Point of clarification? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, City Clerk, I didn't get the one name that was submitted.
Yes.
Thank you.
That name is American Road Maintenance.
That was the name, it sounds like, doesn't sound like a formal title, but it was.
Thank you.
Right now, so I guess we have the public hearing. Anybody want to express their view on this item? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed on this item. Ma'am, can you read 8525 into the record?
Resolution Number 8525, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, making a determination that the public necessity, health, safety, or welfare requires the formation of an Underground Utility District on Doty Avenue from El Segundo Boulevard to 126th Street, which will enable the city to engage in utility removal and underground installation for adoption.
Make a motion?
Mayor, to the chair, can I ask just for an attorney clarification? So for myself, council member, I don't know if this is in the proximity of where I live, right? Which would be like 126th Street and would be York?
Yes, so if you live within 500 feet of that location, you should abstain from voting, or you should declare conflict and step out of the dais.
Okay, so that would be like 126 York, 126 El Segundo between York and...
I don't know if that would be 500 feet, maybe...
Yeah, I just want, that's why I wanted to make a clarification, because I don't want to be voting on something if I have a conflict because I actually live in that area.
It would be safer than for you to declare conflict.
Okay, so let me step out.
It would be safer, safer than for you to declare conflict.
I will, can I, for the record?
Yes.
Thank you, City Clerk. I am recusing myself from item number 12. I will leave and return after it's been voted on, thank.
Thank you.
Ma'am, and that's for the sake of proximity, right? Yeah, okay, let's go.
I second the motion. You made a motion, so I second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voting reflects mayor and council voting yes, with Councilwoman Reyes English abstaining from voting.
Okay. So let's please try, Mr. City Attorney, please have him anticipate these types of things though, for the sake of the council members. And then we also have to be on the lookout too for certain things like that. Public hearing regarding the budget, Madam Clerk, please read item 13.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the proposed budget workshop, department works, work plans, presentation for fiscal year 2025, 2026. No written communications were received.
Good. Do we have presentation?
Yes, we do. I would like to kick the presentation off if, if I may. Thank you. Thank you. This is one of the best times of the year that we celebrate our financial knowledge, that we show city council of staff and the residents that we're budgeting and making the best of the money that we're bringing in. With that being said, good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. I'm proud to announce this kickoff proposal, annual budget for fiscal year 2526. This budget reflects our shared commitment to financial responsibility, quality, public service, and community investment. We're presenting a balanced budget with continued growth in key revenue areas. Cannabis tax, TOT, which stands for Transit Occupancy Tax. These funds allow us to maintain core services and invest in the things that matter most to our residents, public safety, street repairs, youth and senior programming at the parks. We also have made huge steps in capital projects. I'd like to name a few of those. Zella Davis, which we had a ribbon cutting today, Holly Park, Ramona Park, and Eucalyptus Park. We're making great progress on our senior center, excuse me, our civic park, our senior center, and our maintenance yard, and key infrastructure upgrades like 120th. This proposed budget is just not a financial plan, it's a reflection of our values, vision for Hawthorne. I want to thank our finance team under the leadership of Felice Lopez. Let's give her a big hand. I'd like to thank our department heads, city council especially, for your leadership and input through this process. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Felice Lopez, our finance director.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, elected officials, city staff, and residents. Thank you for the opportunity to present the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2526. As you are aware, a lot of time and effort goes into preparing the budget. Finance staff began preparing the budget documents in December, so I'd like to first start off by thanking our finance staff, Miguel Alvarado, Venetia Castrello, and Patty Hernandez. Thanks to all of our department heads and senior staff who adhered to deadlines, and our city manager who directed and supported us through the process. This budget could not be completed without, without all of your support and effort. Our goal with this budget process is always to provide a clear and concise budget proposal to the city council and to develop and maintain a structurally balanced budget that maximizes city resources necessary to build, sustain, and enhance the city's future. For the last 10 years, the city has focused on financial responsibility and transparency. The overarching theme or themes of this budget have been sustainable fiscal planning and infrastructure investment and maintenance. The city's focus is on long-term financial stability and responsible budgeting, along with allocating resources for road repairs, public transit and utility upgrades, and developing a proactive, long-term infrastructure strategy to prevent costly emergencies. Decisions that are made today will help maintain sustainability that will serve Hawthorne well in the future. Citizens, property owners, and businesses are encouraged to share ideas and provide input concerning the community and budgetary programs. This can be accomplished by discussing issues with city commissions and committees or directly with program directors. Citizens' input received during these public hearings and other correspondence is not only invited but also needed to ensure that public needs are met. If city council would open their binders to the summary section, you can follow along. The first tab. And for those of you at home, or later when you can go back and review this, there's information provided on the website. There's a link here on the presentation that shows you where to go on the city website. It'll be on the finance section and it's the proposed budget for fiscal year 2526. There's also a binder in City Clerk's office and at the public library. Okay, so the proposed budget reflects a $353,000, a $353,810 surplus. $353,810 surplus. As we will discuss later in the presentation, the city is expecting an increase of slightly over 1% in general fund revenue. This is a change from previous years. And I wanted to direct your attention to page three of that summary section. There is a graph there that shows you over the last 10 years what the sales tax history has been. And council can see that there have been increases every year since 2010. Okay. In 2024 was the first year that the city saw a decrease in sales tax revenues. We went from 40.4 million in 2023 to 36 million in 2024. Yes. It's that summary section and it's the third page. The first tab, third page. So if you go, yeah, so three, page three. Yeah, no, so, well, let me go back so that we're not confused. Yeah, so page three of your binder. The first tab that says summary.
No, 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 the next one.
There's a bar graph that shows the years of sales tax history.
Who's on first, Felice? Thank you.
Okay, so again, and fiscal year 2024, there was a decrease in, in sales tax revenue. We were at 36 million. In 2025, we budgeted for 40 million, but at mid-year, there was a reduction made of 2.5 million due to the slowdown in the economy. So that leaves a balance of 37 million, 37.5 million for this fiscal year. We do want to caution that there could be additional reduction in sales tax revenue through the rest of this fiscal year and probably into fiscal year 2026. So we will probably be back at mid-year with some type of adjustment for sales tax. It all depends on how the tariffs play out, so. So during our last quarter, quarter sales tax meeting with our tax consultants, they provided information showing reductions in almost all categories, general goods, business and industry, building and construction, fuel stations, and restaurants. The only increases that we saw, and slight increases, not very high, was auto and transportation and in the state and county pools. And then this, the pool is basically sales tax from out of state or from other cities that come, that are placed into the pool and then are distributed to all the different cities. Okay. The proposed budget reflects overall increases in expenditures for all departments in salaries and benefits due to MOU negotiated items. This again would be in the purse pension and unfunded liability along with healthcare. Healthcare continues to increase annually. There's an, the, the largest increases will be in maintenance of 13.5% and.
Ms. Lopez, are we on the right slide or are we?
No, I'm, I'm going to move on to that in, in a second. I'm just giving you a little overview.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just for efficiencies, can you tell us when we should be looking at something? Or when you're giving us a summary that might not be clear?
I'm going to move into the, into the slides in just a second.
All right, thank you.
So there's a 13.5% increase in maintenance and operations and a 57.8% increase in capital outlay. So now I'm going to give you a summary of all of the departments and then when I'm done, we have selected five departments that will highlight their work plans for.
I'm sorry, before you move on, can you just repeat that last sentence you said?
That we have an increase in maintenance and operations. That one's a 13.5% and then capital outlay of 57.8%.
Thank you.
Okay, so. So for city council and treasurer, there's an increase of 2.84%. There's an overall dollar increase of $13.8,000. These increases are 15,000 in healthcare for city council and an increase of 10,000 in travel required, travel and required committees, and then in training. Also a $15,000 increase in contract services for treasurer. For non-departmental, we have a total increase of 2,648,000. Here, we have an increase in the city property revitalization of $1 million. There's a decrease of 400,000 in special payouts, 3 million in operating transactions, operating transfers, and ARPA programs. Most of them have been completed, so there's also a decrease of 588,000 there.
It's, Ms. Lopez, Mrs. Lopez, where's that summary page? Should it be in our book or should it be part of agenda?
If you, if you want to follow along, you can go to the tab that says council.
Okay.
So currently, we're on non-departmental. If you go to that tab, page one of one to one to three, or one to three, you can follow along regarding the notes and summary that Ms. Lopez was providing.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so we have for Measure HH, we have a decrease of 263,000. And this is a decrease in the School Resource Officer program. Just for the Measure H side, there's still additional amount budgeted in the police department, but because of the sales tax estimate that dropped on the Measure HH side, we had to keep that within those boundaries. For fire services, so now we're, if you want to go into the non-departmental, which is the next tab. For fire services, there was no change, that remains at $16 million. Normally, there's an increase there about a million every year. If you'd like to move on to the city manager's budget, which is the next tab. Yes. Okay, for the city manager's budget, we have an increase of $58,500. This is an increase in salary and benefits of 73,000 and 16,000 in operating expense. And there's a decrease of 31,000 in contract services. And if we move on to the city clerk tab. And you can stop me at any time if you have a question. The city clerk budget is decreasing by 182,000. This is due to election cost. One year, we have 225,000 in election cost. The next year, that drops off because there is no election. Next year, we'll have it back. There's also a, an increase in salary and benefits of about 31,000. If we move on to city attorney. There's an increase of $45,800, increase in receiverships of $50,000, increase of salary and benefits on the admin side, there's an increase of 65,000. Then on the prosecution side, there's a decrease of 82,000 because an employee was moved from prosecution over to the liability section.
And Ms. Lopez, the chair, can you just speak a little bit on the, the transition from the insurance?
We are, as of July 1st, transitioning from IC, our ICMA to PRISM. And so that is going to provide a savings, I believe, of about a million. Robert, if you could.
So we're still going through the paper process. We don't have confirmation yet. We expect to be accepted by PRISM, which is a larger pool, JPA, for our insurance. We're going to keep the 2 million self-insurance retention, which is likely deductible, will be self-insured up to first $2 million. Based on what they have estimated, they said that our premium should go down from ICMA by 1 million a year for the same coverage, but it's not confirmed yet. But that's what we're expecting based on what they have estimated.
Thank you.
But our budget is, is, we always budget higher because we don't know for sure.
And for the city attorney, we also have the workers' comp program. And that'll be the last, the last two, the last four pages in that section. The workers' comp program is increasing by 140,000 and this is primarily in excess workers' comp insurance. And the liability program is decreasing by 70,000 in salary and benefits and 450,000 in liability assessment and auto damages. On the PRISM side, those are not going to be charged separately. Okay, so if we move on to finance. On the finance side, there's an increase of 102,000 and this is an increase of 98,000 in salary and benefits. This is due to the department being fully staffed. We no longer have breaks where we had to hire employees. So now that's, our department is fully staffed, so we don't expect to see any large increases for the following year. The next tab is for business license. There's an increase of $73,000. This is an increase of 77,000 in salary and benefits and then a slight decrease in operating costs. If we move on to human resources. There is an increase of 44,756. There's an increase of 137,000 in salary and benefits, a decrease of 75,000 in contract services, and a decrease in training of 40,000. Moving on to the next page. And your next tab is for the police department. We have an increase on the police department side of 4.8 million. There's an increase of 1.3 million in salaries, 1.9 million in benefits. There's an increase of 1.3 million in salaries, 1.9 million in benefits, 1.6 million in operating costs and these include building maintenance, operating supplies, machinery and equipment, Prop A funding for transit program. And then we move into public.
Through the chair.
Discrepancy here from what I see on the, in the book versus your summary statement. I have over here that it's 46 million, jumping to 51 million. Over here I see 50 million, jumping to 56.
Mr. Mayor, what page are you on of your, your book?
I'm looking at the summary page and comparing it to the detailed budget page on, in the book.
Forty-six, forty-six, 532, 699 to 51, 380, 587 for the police department?
Yeah, but I see over here in the budget summary that's in the binder.
Page one of five.
Then I see a corresponding.
Oh, you know what? The, the problem here is that IT is included in the police department budget, but we always break out IT in order for them to showcase kind of what they do separately.
Okay, let's showcase it, let's keep doing that, that's fine.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So as we just explained, I think maybe the chief can tell you, but probably the, the increase on the police department is because we went from 88 office to 95 sworn office, right?
We, we are now fully staffed over on the police department side.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the explanation.
And now we'll move over to. So IT is, has an increase of $705,500. There increases in computer services of 500,000 and 200,000 in machinery and equipment. And if we move over to public works. We have a decrease in public works of 160,700. They have an increase in salary and benefits of 43,000, operating costs, decrease in operating costs of 200,000, decrease in operating supplies, travel, training and maintenance costs. Planning has an overall decrease of $66,500. There was a decrease in the planning budget of 153,000 in salary and benefits and contract services of 50,000, but there was an increase on the code enforcement side of 87,000 in salary and benefits and 17,000 in contract services. Now we move to building and safety. We have an increase for building and safety of $439,000. There's an increase in salary and benefits of 350,000 and 70,000 in contract services and a small increase in software licenses of 17,000. And we move over to. Community services and media, there's an increase in this program of 172,700. There's an increase of 230,000 in operating costs, which include 150,000 for office furniture for the, the senior center, which is being remodeled now, 50,000 for parks and 17,000 increase in utilities. There's also a decrease of $50,000 in contract services. So the overall increase for the fiscal year 25, 26 budget is 3,183,718, which is about a 3% increase from last fiscal year. There's also a decrease in grants and restricted funds of 3,194,000 and an overall citywide expenditure decrease of 26,194,000. And this is due to 4.1 million in ARPA funding, which was the funding that the city received after COVID to help with programs designed to mitigate the COVID effects. So, so far the, the projects that have been completed are the sewer project, pallet shelters, facade improvement, telehealth and low-income housing. Street improvements decreased by 13 million and given the major projects scheduled for the next year, including city hall, senior center and city yard, public works has deferred other capital improvement projects until these are completed. So public works will process design for the street programs in 2025, 26 and construction will move to 26, 27 and beyond. And lastly, the decreases also because CDBG and home, there's a decrease of 4.2 million. The decrease is due to a carryover from fiscal year 23, 24, which was spent or carried over to 24, 25. The 25, 26 funding is within normal levels. Okay, so here we have fund, restricted fund increases for 25, 26 and we show increase in the sales, the state gas tax of 359,000, street projects fund for 458,000, public works Prop A of 105,000, capital improvement of 1.4 million, police grants of 1.1 million and housing authority of 379,000. And focusing on housing authority programs now, although we see an increase in the EHV programs, which is that 379,000, the overall housing programs will see a decrease of 212,000 for the section eight program primarily in the portables. And as I mentioned earlier, CDBG programs show a decrease of, CDBG and home show a decrease of 4.2 and this is 1 million in CDBG and 3.2 million in the home program. And again, it's not a decrease in funding, it's the fact that 23, 24 had a carryover and it showed in 25, 24, 25. Okay, and this is just presenting the budget in a graph form by department and by category. So we see that the budget is a total of 113,133,581. The police department makes up 45% of this budget with 51.4 million. Non-departmental is 16% of the budget at 17.9. Legislative and administrative is 7% of the budget and if you'll look, and you probably can't see it, but legislative and administrative is mayor and council, city manager, treasurer, city clerk, finance, business license, human resources and city attorney. So that's that 7%, 7.4 million. Public works, building and safety, community services and planning are 14% of the budget at 15.4 million. IT services are 4% of the budget at almost 5 million and fire services are 14% of the budget at 16 million. And by category, we see that personnel is 52% of the budget, capital outlay is 1% of the budget and this is machinery and equipment and large purchases. Operating transfers is 4% of the budget and this is bond payments, tax rebates and reserve allocations if revenues permit. Contract services is 20% of the budget, this 22.7 million includes the 16 million for the fire contract. Maintenance and operations is 15% of the budget at 16.7 million. Interdepartmental is 5% at 5.4 million and that's cost allocation, liability insurance and vehicle maintenance. And finally, retiree health and employee relations is at 4.1 million and that's 2% of the budget. Moving on to the revenues. The general fund budget, as I mentioned earlier, is increasing by 1%. There is a decrease in taxes of three, almost 3.5 million. The decrease in taxes is 3 million, there's a decrease in TOT of 1.5 and 700,000 in short-term rentals. There's an increase in property tax, franchise and utility taxes, so it balanced out a little bit of that, that decrease. Licenses and permits increased by 400, oops, increase in licenses and permits is 302,000 and there's $400,000 increase in construction permits and a decrease in film and alarm permits and alarm and animal licenses. There was no change to the fines and forfeitures, that remains at 3.2 million. Revenue from use of money or interest, interest earnings increased by 1 million. The investment earnings in fiscal year 24, 25 were increased by 1.8 at mid-year, so we expect to see an increase here, but due to the economy, we decided to leave it at 2.5 million. Intergovernmental and state and county, this increased by 914,000. The increase was 865,000 in VLF, which is vehicle license fees and 50,000 in Prop A funding. For service charges, we have an increase of 328,000. This increase was in plan check fees of 250,000, 120,000 in code enforcement fees and a decrease of several smaller line items. Other, which is, with other revenue encompasses contributions from water, refuse and RCC and IT services, that increased by 1.2 million. And this is an increase in operating transfers for pending ARPA projects. So we're budgeting for 1.2 million in ARPA projects and we're, will be transferring into the general fund, 1.2 million in revenue. For program contributions, which is Prop A and the airship, we have an increase of $1 million and that's entirely an increase in Prop A funding, which is for the transit safety program. So the, the dollar value increase for this fiscal year in revenue is 1,283,230. We had a decrease in grants and restricted funds of 23.2 million and of course, as we had in expenditures, there is a total citywide decrease of 26.2 million. Okay, and then the proposed revenue, as a graph, we show that licenses and permits are 2% of the budget at 2.1 million. Revenue from use of money is 2% of the budget at 2.5. Fines and forfeitures are 3%. Program contributions are 2%. Miscellaneous revenue is 3%. Service charges are 4%. Intergovernmental, state and county is 14% and taxes make up 70% of the city's revenue. So that's our major revenue source. 47% of the taxes is sales tax, which is 37 million. And what we've listed here is just what general, the major sources of revenue is general and consumer goods, state and county pools, autos and transportation, business and industry, building and construction, restaurants and hotels, fuels and service stations, food and drug and all other. And that concludes my presentation. Did you have any questions or we can move on to the presentations from the departments?
Should I wait?
Okay. You want me to bring them up? Okay, so our first presenter will be Ms. Selena Acuna from Public Works. I'll leave it on.
Thank you, Felice. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council and Community. My name is Selena Acuna, Public Works Manager, and I'm pleased to present a summary of the Public Works Department accomplishments from the 2024 to 25 fiscal year and outline our plans moving forward. So through the leadership of our city manager and the direction from this council, our team has worked very hard to meet and exceed the goals from the city. The Public Works Department proudly oversees five divisions, which are engineering, airport, equipment, environmental services and street maintenance. So together we've tackled various infrastructure needs. Over the past year, we've completed eight major capital improvement projects totaling over $25 million, including the Hawthorne Boulevard improvement, Imperial Highway upgrades and the 120th Street project. These improvements enhance mobility, safety and traffic flow for our residents. We currently have seven projects under construction, including the new city yard, the senior center expansion and multiple upgrades to the police department. This active phase represents a $28 million investments into our city's future. Looking ahead, we have over $60 million worth of capital improvements in the design phase. These projects include major improvements on the corridors of Crenshaw Boulevard, Rosecrans Avenue, El Segundo Boulevard, Inglowood Avenue, Imperial Highway and Manito Gardens area. The city hall expansion and underground parking structure is also under the design phase. Multiple park improvements that include Eucalyptus Park, Ramona Park and Holly Park, the renovation of the Hawthorne Pool, continued electrification through the EV charger installation project, significant investments into our airport that include lighting improvements, signage and taxiway resurfacing. With the Los Angeles hosting the LA 28 Olympic Games, the FIFA World Cup and another Superbowl, we must continue preparing for the increased demand on transportation. Hawthorne's proximity to these events puts us in a unique, in a unique position to benefit economically, but only if we're ready. So investing now into the infrastructure with EV charger installations and just beautifying the city will ensure that Hawthorne remains competitive, safe and welcoming, not only to our residents, but to all our global visitors. So this year we also submitted three strategic RFPs. One of the most important ones was the citywide parking study. This study will help us understand how parking is being used and where improvements are needed. As the city continues to grow, parking demands are increasing, so we want to make sure we recommend the right solutions. In addition, a development impact study is also underway. This will help us determine how much new developments should contribute financially to help pay for public infrastructure needs and services. In addition, we released an RFP to install 50 EV chargers throughout multiple parks and facilities. We're also awaiting results from key grant applications that include the community project funding through Maxine Waters, Caltrans Sustainability Transportation Grant and many EV and fleet replacement grant applications. We will continue to aggressively pursue outside funding to help support all our capital improvement projects. This will offset the general fund expenditure, especially these, during these pre-Olympic infrastructure windows where we feel that federal and state investments are more available. On the operational side, we've implemented and expanded the SB 1383 organic waste inspections. We actually recently had an audit through the state, which was very successful. We continue with our illegal dumping cleanups. We work together with the police department and community services to assist with the homeless outreach and cleanups. The Parking T program continues to be successful and we continue with the coordination with Metro and Caltrans on some of their projects that include the sound wall installation near the Glasgow area, the expansion to express lanes on the I-105 and signal coordination with Metro. Working closely with Inglowood, MTA and various agencies also to improve traffic flow and to try to take advantage of the economic developments that come with the events. flow and to try to take advantage of the economic developments that come with the events. We have also completed a sidewalk condition assessment, which will assist us in identifying and prioritizing areas most in need of repairs. In addition, we purchased 32 new pieces of equipment and hosted 18 public outreach events. Our goal this year was to connect with the community, share information of the services that we provide, show the community how to use the 311 app, and just engage with them to see where they, they need our attention. We also conducted 10 department trainings ranging from CPR, HazWhopper, stormwater pollution prevention, and traffic control. For the upcoming fiscal year, we are committed to maintaining our operating costs at current levels, recognizing the economic constraints that we all face. As such, we are postponing purchases of any additional equipment or software unless we are, unless they are supported through external fundings or grants. Instead, we're focusing on key priorities that maximize the impact and will ensure savings to our department. This includes street division truck replacement, such as concrete and asphalt, patch trucks purchases to extend the pavement life, a new grind machine for in-house resurfacing. Some projects that we plan to do next year are also to place flashing stop signs at school zones, finalizing our city hall expansion bid package, and retrieve funding to seismically retrofit this existing city hall. We would like to complete the senior center and city yard projects and collaborate with our attorney's office on a new water lease agreement. In addition, we are working on adjusting our permit fees because the current rates are outdated and no longer reflect the true cost of providing services. By updating them, we'll better align with current industry costs. Most importantly, this upcoming year, we want to prioritize our people with more professional development, safety training, and skill building. Because at the end of the day, no amount of funding replaces a well-trained and motivated staff. Public Works is operated on 3.5% general fund. An engineering team are tasked to submit grant applications upfront to help support the expenditure plan equal to or below our current rates. We must continue to be efficient, proactive, and grant-competitive towards any available funding out there. So with big events like the Olympics, FIFA, and Super Bowl, it's now more important, more than ever, to keep our streets clean and ready for whatever comes our way. So thank you for your attention, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Really appreciate all the information that you provided. I just have a few questions. Clarification. So as I'm looking through this, on page three of three, where it says hazardous waste disposal, can you give me a little bit more information about that? Because I thought that our contract that we have with Republic, that would be an expense under them.
No, so hazardous waste is actually, we collected through like our illegal dumping programs. So if someone will report it on 311 app, our team will go out there and collect it. But it doesn't, it shouldn't be collected through Republic. They do not process any hazardous waste.
Okay. And then you mentioned the EV chargers. You said they're going to be at our parks?
Yes. So we have Holly Glen, Holly Park, Memorial Center, some at the police department, some at city hall, and I think that's it.
Jim Thorpe?
I'm sorry?
Jim Thorpe?
Yes, Jim Thorpe.
Okay. And then I noticed an increase of graffiti removal. Can you explain why the increase in that?
Yeah, so through the, through the 311 app, we've definitely been seeing an increase in reports. So that's where the increase is coming.
Okay, that's good to know that it's, it's actually working. And then you spoke about you guys are doing a report for, to, to survey what needs repairs in terms of the sidewalk?
Yes.
How much longer will that be?
So they already did the assessment. We're just waiting, waiting on the finalized report. So I believe maybe by August, we should have something.
Okay, that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ma, thank you, Selena. Great presentation and outcomes. Public Works, you know, we don't realize that even your budget, you know, is only like a $4 million, but you guys bring tons of thousands and millions of dollars in grants, right? So I have to tell you that all these projects that we have done, the 34 projects that we had this year, and then we have more into pipelines, talking about 28 million and 15 millions and even, so just give us a quick about Major H, Major H, Major R, right? All of those monies that's coming through Caltrans, Metro, and SABEC, how has improved, you know, our streets, right? Because through those grants that you guys write, constantly writing grants and submits project for funding, that's what is keep our cities beautiful. And because without those money, we couldn't operate the way we are.
Yes, correct. So we actually have a pavement management program. We do it every five years. So we have, you know, someone go out there and check the conditions of the streets. We create a list, and then depending on the, the PQI index number that we receive, that's how we rank each street. And then we go back to all the funding agencies and let them know like, hey, this is why we need this. We provide statistics, any accidents that may have happened on that street, and just finding ways to help fund all these projects.
And I was telling Akbar that his fund is coming up from the SABEC, from the SCAC. So make sure you guys apply for those grants, okay?
Yes.
Thank you, well done.
Thank you.
Yes, to the chair. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Selena. That was a great report. I've always thought of Public Works as being my favorite department, but don't, don't be shy. I mean, I, I love you all. But truly, the workforce, the labor that comes from your department is unbelievable. If you go across just our communities and you see how, you know, we're just on it when it comes to addressing the needs of the community and the request of the people. And so that's kind of some, somewhat impartial that I take too, because it's really the nuts and bolts. And then right behind that, obviously, public safety or police. But you touched on some things that I'm really glad about, the areas in which ultimately you're responsible for, and you named them. I think it was in the engineering, equipment, environment, airport, and infrastructure. So all of that is all important. And then, of course, you spoke on a number of capital projects that we're all proud of, especially the new city hall, our senior center, and our new Public Works Yard. If you hadn't had a chance to get over there, City Council, take a look at that. Looks really great. And then obviously, the parks. Throughout my years, we've always heard from constituents that they want their parks upgraded, and they want equipment, and we worked on that. We, we delivered, and so thank you for that. I'm really proud about the 50 EV chargers that are being implemented throughout the city. I hope there could be some way of posting that, Vaughn, either on our city website or Chabot, again, chat box, to just talk about where those are going to be located and, you know, where they're at in proximity so that we could have easy access to those. That's all important, including, you know, the RFPs and things like this that are coming down the pipelines. I know at one point, we talked about having 30 projects just in the pipelines alone, and that's a lot of work just for, you know, little Hawthorne in a sense, but very proud. There's some things I really want to touch on that I want to make sure that we capture, Felice, with regards to next year's budget. And that includes reimbursements from, reimbursements from agencies that ultimately we are servicing, right? We're talking about LA County jurisdiction, the railroad jurisdiction, Caltrans jurisdiction, Metro jurisdiction. When I talk about this, I'm talking about the activity that's happening in those agencies that are in our city. But ultimately, the Department of Public Works works again to deliver, resolving some of the constituent requests that are not in our jurisdiction. I want to make sure that we're capturing reimbursements from those departments. Not only are we billing for services, but we're getting reimbursed. And I want to show that in our next projections, or what we've spent thus far in those monies and what we've captured in return. Because at the end of the day, we really need to hold the line when it comes to, you know, not, not, not being reimbursed for a service that we delivered on. That includes our water utilities, Metro, Caltrans, LA, LA County, the railroad. That goes for any jurisdiction that is not LA, that is not considered Hawthorne. But I know there are partners, and I know that they would be doing the same thing if we had to, you know, reimburse them for something they did for us, right? I know you talked about the flashing stop signs for schools, which is very important. I'm glad that that's coming down the pipelines. There's oftentimes a lot of families that have called and have spoke about that, just, you know, safer streets for their children to be able to walk safely. Great improvements on the 120th Street. And you talked a little bit about the FIFA Cup, the Olympics, and also the All-Star Games that are coming. I mean, all of this is important for our infrastructure. I just want to commend the Department of Public Works for all that you're doing and you continue to do, especially capturing the grants that assist. And I'm really excited just for the next few years here coming up to see finally the capital projects that are going to be, you know, great, amazing, city hall, our senior center, and our Public Works Yard. But I really want to make sure that monies that, again, are owed, that we work to, to make sure of that. The reason I say this is because recently, there's been notices posted along the railroad, and it speaks to the railroad company being responsible for their own dumping. And that's important because for the times that I've seen, and we've addressed the railroad, they're awful. But here we go again. Public Works goes out there and cleans it up. And so I want to commend you guys, but I also want to make sure that we're being reimbursed, and we could see that in our next budget, next fiscal year. But thank you so much for the great work and your presentation.
Thank you.
I actually want to echo what you just said. Thank you for all my councilwoman colleagues on all the comments so far, but exactly, sometimes we have like Caltrans, you know? One of the big things that I have a complaint about is how Caltrans doesn't take care of its, doesn't take care of its on-ramps and off-ramps. And it keeps it so, you know, it's just the vegetation overgrowth that's there. And you have the, the homeless individuals that are around there, and then that makes it very conducive to fires. I mean, you know, I mean, I know the governor, all of a sudden, now he had the inspiration to push for us to be able to, you know, move the homeless along or find them, you know, just to remove the encampments and stuff. And so all these mandates that are, are being come down, brought down to us, but they're unfunded. It's like, who's going to pay for it, you know? Caltrans not doing its job cleaning up what it needs to do. We get constant emails from, from these residents in the northeastern part of Hawthorne, where there's the canals or something, you know, the waterways, over and over. And the county's not cleaning up, you know, mending the fences that are there, and people are able to get down into the, into the waterways. And just so many different things, man. So I agree, Councilwoman Angie Race English on that. Yes, they're our partners, but they're not doing their part. You know, we're kind of always coming in and fixing up things for them. So we, you know, whatever we can, directive on my part. I mean, I think you would agree. Can we have an item, can we have some type of summary as to, you know, actions that we've taken on behalf of some of these agencies and how much we've had to cut into our funds and how much we need to recoup? Aside from this, this, right now, we need to move forward with this. But I think that you would be included in that effort with Akbar, right?
Yes.
Is that okay with you? All right. Thank you. It's kind of like when we used to do the helicopters, right? Remember the helicopter? And we, we used to go do the mutual aid, but they were supposed to reimburse us for that. And sometimes some of these cities wouldn't follow through, so we had to be on them.
Good evening again. I am Erica Lampkin, your HR Director, and I am the keeper of people and processes. And Human Resources is continuously working to create and improve a cultural environment in which employees are engaged in their employee-like lifecycle while they're here with the city. Some of the things that HR accomplished in the 24, 25 fiscal year was we created an employee newsletter. And that newsletter provides information about the employees, and it gives the employees information about what's happening in the city. There has been positive feedback on that, and we are constantly working to improve with every addition that is sent out. And by the way, it's sent out every month, the beginning of every month, and includes things like birthdays, work anniversaries, a midday funny.
Jane Day.
Denim Day, absolutely. And it just kind of highlights what we're doing, and it highlights, it's an opportunity to highlight the employees. This year, we also partnered with Connecta for financial wellness opportunities given to the employees. We hosted a lunch and learn with two colleges. They came and presented information about the colleges that, or about the college, their particular school, and it provided an opportunity for the employees to consider going back to school for bachelor's degrees in various subject matters. We created a new bargaining unit that is now called the Hawthorne Police Civilian Association. We had our first annual, I'm hoping, motivational training with a motivational speaker. Her name was Daphne. We had good feedback, bad feedback. It was, but it was new, and we're going to improve in that area as well. I'm continuously working with the departments on recruitment. Obviously, Public Works is busy, probably going to be getting some recruitment once this budget is approved. We completed negotiations with the five groups that we have. That is HEG, HP, well, we didn't negotiate with HPCA. HPOA, HPMSG, HMEA, full-time and HMEA, part-time. Proud of that accomplishment, and we did it timely. We have hosted multiple, multiple employee engagement events. We, I have presented to you a number of Good Neighbor Award recipients like tonight, and we will continue to, to do that. What are we going to do next fiscal year? I have determined that there are a lot of policy updates that are needed because laws have changed, rules have changed, and our policies have been neglected. So we'll be working on that. I'm going to, or we are, because it's me and my staff, going to coordinate a health benefit fair. We had one last year. It was bigger than the first year that I had, and we are going to continue to make it more robust and give it, give the employees an opportunity with a number of options. I want to have the parking lot full. That's my goal. Full of vendors. We're going to offer or continue to invest in training opportunities so that we can retain the staff that we have. We are working on staff retention, or going to work on staff retention with developing a retention plan. HR's records were kind of somewhat neglected, and so I'm going to, I'm putting forth a record plan to organize. We just have boxes and boxes and boxes of stuff, and it's not labeled. I don't know what it is. All I know is it says HR. So we are working on organizing that and improving that, cleaning it up, having lists so that when we transition into the new building, we have structure and organization. Because right now, I don't have that, and it bothers me. HR constantly has a presence in a number of committees. Off the top of my head, I'm part of the state of the city. I'm part of the training, the logo. I can't remember. I'm on a number of committees with an HR representation. And our onboarding process, we have created a, just some tweaks, but I would like for it to, that to be even more robust. So when the employee comes in on their first day, we, eyes are getting foggy. We take a picture. We have a big welcome sign now that says, you know, welcome to the city of Hawthorne with their name on it. So the first day is just a little bit lighter and not so scary. And so we are going to improve that and grow that process their first day a little bit more. What else? We are working on making the evaluations a little bit more meaningful. They are still happening annually. They will continue to happen annually, but with improvements along the way. And what else? Exit interviews. I have, I'm working on creating an exit interview. I don't want to see people go, but they do go. That's why we're developing a staff retention plan. But we don't really know, we don't have a But we don't really know, we don't have a plan or a process for exit interviews, and just never been done. And I think it's time that we figure out why people are leaving, if it's outside of retirement, if they're going to another city, then we want to know. We want to know what we, as the City of Hawthorne, can do better. And last but not least, we are going to be working on internal processes for emergency preparedness. It has been challenging trying to find a person. They don't meet the qualifications, the applications are just less than, and because we are starting from the ground up, I want somebody who is super qualified, that I can manage, and push a plan and process for emergency preparedness. And that are the highlights of HR for 2526.
To the Chair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. As you were talking, what jumped in my head was when you talked about you guys created this magazine that comes out monthly. It would be great to see the new employee in there as well.
You would like to see a picture?
Oh yeah, absolutely. And I'm gonna tell you why. Because recently, I would say over the last five months, I've been meeting new employees over at the Memorial Center. And I have been here three years, and some of the people, I'm just meeting for the first time. So, it's nice to see the face, so when I see folks, I know that they work here, and then I can put a face with a name. So, it would be great to highlight the new employees in the magazine.
Okay.
Thank you.
To the Chair. Thank you, Erica, great presentation.
Thank you.
I think you have some great ideas. Look forward to those being implemented. As you know, record retention and record destruction is always important. I mean, you could only, you know, have so much in your office, and right now, you have such a small office. I actually look forward to see what Human Resources looks like, Vaughn, in the new City Hall building, along with other departments that are upgrading. So, I'm glad that that's gonna be something that you're gonna do. I really like the morale when it comes to employees participating and engaging with one another at events that we have to recognize their efforts and their work. You know, today, our staff appreciation for those individuals that not only save lives, but more importantly, are great employees and contribute greatly to the department that they're in. The, I could just name a number of events that you've put on, but to continue in those efforts, that's very important, and to celebrate them, right?
Yes.
I really like that. And then, with regards to jobs that are currently available, you could see that you have them posted here. I think you had like a clerk, and you had some other positions that are available that are posted in the booklet. We also have that online. And then, you know, I'm really big now with this whole AI chat box, and so we want to make sure to show that, because how easy is it to just go on, you know, the 311 app and ask, you know, for Human Resources jobs available in the city? So, that's very important. I'm glad that we're staffed up with regards to our police department and Public Works, and there's gonna probably be more, like you said.
Yes.
But I like that our city is contributing greatly and showing the community and the residents especially, the hard work that we're making efforts to address their needs. And so, that's important. And so, thank you for all that you do, and great report, and, you know, anything that you think you need in a bigger need, please let us know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Like to hear that.
Thank you, Ms. Erica.
You're welcome.
I have to, this is on, yeah. I have to say, you're a breath of fresh air and a sunshine every single day.
Thank you.
So, that reflects to your department, especially when you spread all the love to other departments and the people that you bring on board, because HR, back then, you know, used to be a disaster. And you have put it on the top of our list, one of the great HR departments that we have in South Bay. And you, you know, now constantly hire new people and bringing people that is qualified, that it's coming with a smile. And you start with you. So, you have done outstanding in my book, and I have to say, you have helped improve our city, our, all the departments, and helping with Vaughn. You have been a tremendous asset to this, and you're not allowed to leave, ever.
Ah, okay.
Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate that acknowledgement, thank you.
Yeah, and can I just make sure, just real quick?
Yes.
You know, emergency preparedness is really big on my books.
Yes.
And Councilmember Montero, so, yeah, we need someone. So, I'm setting a goal between now and December that we'll find that one.
Okay.
Okay? Even if it's two, maybe?
I'm up for the challenge.
Right?
Up for the challenge.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just had one go back. I just really, really wanted to say thank you so much for the ideas that you have, but more importantly, the exit interview. I think that's really important.
I think so too.
And in my past careers or jobs that I've worked, I had an exit interview, and it's definitely a way to find out what we could do better as a city as it regards to retention. And sometimes, you don't know, and being able to ask those folks that information, but it's just like, you know, when you break up, you get to say why you breaking up, right? Instead of, you know, you break up and you just walk away. So, thank you so much for those great ideas that you're coming up. I mean, it's really gonna make our HR really stand out and be super, super official. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I ditto what Montero say with your personality, but I also just wanted to throw in that you be wearing them shoes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
To the Chair. Yeah, and it's not the shoes, it's the toes. Those nails be popping, I love it. But I just want to say how grateful I am for you. From day one, when I was on the Veterans Affairs Commission to today, you've just been that shining star, like Montero was saying. You've always been there, very helpful. I've seen some of the events that you put on for the employees, how much you go out of your way, how much you really care. It's just, and being in the federal government, and HR is a nightmare. I mean, if you work for HR, you are hated in other organizations, and I, but that, what you bring to the table goes a long way, because HR still has a bad name. You bring to the table a special talent of caring, and we see that in your heart, in your actions, your heart shines through. So, I appreciate it. You've made my time here outstanding, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, and I appreciate you too.
Thank you.
You know I do. Oh, wow, look at that.
Free job, Erica. The next department we have presenting is Community Services, with two presentations from Deputy Director Kwanabui, and from Eric Chavez, our media supervisor.
Thank you. Right, let's keep going.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pearl Tim, and City Council. I'm Kwanabui, and I will be presenting a brief overview of fiscal year 2526 budget narrative for the Community Services Department. To begin, I'm excited to share that, starting May 23rd, the Community Services Department will be offering online registration for swim lessons. This new service will all, well, I'm sorry, this new service will allow patrons to register conveniently from home, eliminating the need to stand in long lines. We're also making significant progress with the Hawthorne Senior Center, which is undergoing a major renovation. This new two-story, 20,000-square-foot facility will include enhanced ADA accessibility, new elevators, updated restrooms, and improved signage. On the first floor, we'll have a sewing room, dance room, billiards room, computer lab, multipurpose room, kitchen, transit information on TV monitors in the lobbies and administrative offices. On the second floor, we'll have an art studio, party pottery room, a lounge area, conference room, a larger multipurpose room, and an outdoor deck that overlooks Memorial Park. We will continue offering the core services, including senior mill program, dollarite services, educational workshop, and legal aid, with plans to add bocce ball court to further enhance the recreational opportunities. This project is scheduled to be completed on February 2026. Looking ahead, 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games, the city has established a special event committee to lead efforts in showcasing and promoting Olympic and Paralympic branding throughout the city of Hawthorne. We recently took part in the first 88 for 28 quarterly meeting, joining representatives from all 88 cities across Los Angeles County to coordinate planning and exploring collaborative opportunities for the games. We plan to present our branding proposal to the City Council within the next two months. The Community Services Department deeply values the partnership we have with the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation. They assisted us in refurbishing two baseball fields at Jim Thorpe Park. The upgrades include new fencing, customized signage, foul poles, bullpens, dugouts, and two new solar-powered scoreboards. With the generous support from our Parks and Recreation Foundation, we are proud to offer subsidized baseball program fees for all Hawthorne residents this year. On Saturday, May 17th, we will be celebrating the renovated fields with a ribbon-cutting ceremony, which will also coincide with the opening day for our Dodger baseball program. Now, I'd like to invite Eric Chavez, our media supervisor, to give an update on the Media Division for fiscal year 2526.
Thank you, Kwan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few things for fiscal year for 2025 and 2026 work plans. We're gonna work with staff to continue to bring programming and city updates to our Hawthorne residents and employees through the videos, social media, newsletters, and City Hall lobby display, so we're gonna take charge of that from now on. Hello, can you hear me?
Better.
We're gonna do more content on social media platforms. With the addition of another full-time employee, we can now produce more social media video content to go along with the pictures. In addition, we will start posting all job openings on the city's LinkedIn accounts. Here, I have a quick slide that you guys can see. This is just a little sample of the numbers that we have for the past month of April. Let me make this a little bigger here. So here, this is our social media through all four. This is with the Instagram, Facebook, X, and LinkedIn. Total audience that we got for the month of April, we got 14,533 people seeing our social media. We gained 271 followers in the month of April. We published 103 posts. Impressions, 234,235. Impressions are the number of times any media that we post up on social media shows up on your tablet, phone, or computer. Engagements, we had 10,605. Engagements are the posts that people are actually either commenting, or sharing, or saving, those are the engagements. And total video views, which we've been trying to do more video of on social media, we had a total of 36,025 views just for the month of April. So, that was, that's pretty good. Continuing, we ran a full campaign to introduce My Hawthorne 311. There was confusion going on with the old version called My Civic 311, so now, it's officially the Hawthorns, it's branded with the Hawthorns logo, thanks to our IT department that did that. And we're just trying to get the word out and put it everywhere we can, on social media, the big screens out on the boulevards, on Hawthorne Boulevard, Crenshaw Boulevard, the newsletters, our programming, anywhere we can, we're spreading the word. It's My Hawthorne 311.
My Hawthorne.
Yes. We are relaunching our Business Beat Show in collaboration with our Hawthorne Business Connect to advertise more Hawthorne businesses. We're going to continue on printing our City View monthly newsletter that we advertise, also a digital version on social media. You can find printed versions of our newsletters here in the lobby of City Hall, and we're going to start now putting them, taking them over to Community Services in the Memorial Center. We also got an addition of a new media van. I don't know if you guys seen our new van that we have. The vehicle was purchased with our PEG fund money, and after having our previous van for over 24 years. This vehicle provides enough transportation to carry all our cargo for all our shoots. First time, we didn't have an issue going to the golf tournament, we had plenty of cargo space. And when we're not using it, and cause there's an emergency, we just need some extra vehicles, we could fit up to 12 people in another, in our van, so more transportation in case we have events that we need transportation to. And for our Media Department, we're also part of a few of the committees. We work alongside the Hawthorne Business Connect Committee, the City Hall Expansion and Civic Park Committee, the Logo Implementation Committee, and the My Hawthorne 311 Application Committee. Thank you guys very much.
All right.
Excellent. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Kwan. I follow, and just recently, I don't know why I haven't done this previously, I subscribed, you know, go online, you could subscribe to find out the events and things happening in the city. And I sometimes engage, because there's lots of constituents, maybe constituents, maybe not, because, you know, we're doing a lot of great stuff, but there's always those that wanna, you know, ask the hard questions, which obviously, they're not hard if you live in Hawthorne, and you could see for yourself as far as what we've done. There was one in particular that got my interest, and it said, "What is Hawthorne doing to assist the migrant population, and what services are provided?" And some time ago, maybe a month ago, Vaughn, I had asked for the resources to be put up on our website, you know, directing different tabs, if you will, or links, I should say links, excuse me, so that folks can hit those links and go directly to those services that are being provided, whether it's Chirla, whether it's, you know, LA legal, Benzettic Legal Services, there's a number of services that address those. So, I just want to make sure that we're able to respond and be able to provide where they could go for those services. That's important for me, Vaughn.
Absolutely.
And also for our IT Division to know, and it's very easy to research, right? Immigration services, and they're regular entities. But then too, there's just other information, you know, we're not necessarily required to provide anybody a legal referral, right? But oftentimes, you have folks asking for legal referrals. You could just go online, but oftentimes, you know, there's folks at home that don't have computers, don't have computers, don't speak the language, and don't know what to do. And so, those are the vulnerable ones that I just want to assure that, especially that we have our wordly translation services, somehow that we could just connect all of that to the chat box and to, you know, wordly, to be able to translate in their language and be able to have those services. But you're doing amazing work with regards to social media. I see it, I view it. And this is just everything going on, Kwan, over at Community Services at the Memorial Center. I mean, whenever there's a lot of cars over there, I always ask, like, I wonder what's going on, right? I'll drive by, but great synergy, great information all around, and so, kudos to you, kudos to additional staff, and Channel 22. You guys are everywhere. Whenever I watch TV, you guys in other areas that might not be Hawthorne, and I'm impressed, right? Might be El Camino College, might be, you know, some other areas of Hawthorne, a little bit outside of Hawthorne, but providing great stories and great information so that the community could see exactly what's all out there. So, continue to do that, and push however you can, and we'll support you all the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Chavez, can you talk about the response?
Mr. Chavez, can you talk about the responses that you give on Facebook, Instagram, when the community or residents or non-residents ask questions?
Yeah, when, when they ask questions, if I don't know the answer, I usually contact the department who I think would best answer that question and get back to them. Sometimes I would private message them themselves. This morning, actually, for example, I had someone asking, what's the city doing for homelessness? Like, when are you guys gonna start doing something for homelessness? I went right to her profile, and I just sent them the Community Mondays flyers, the piece that we did on the police officer helping, helping out. So I, I think I sent them like four to five different links, and I welcomed her to show up to a Community Monday event, and I told her with our full-time Dulce Medina, who works with them on a daily basis, and get to know exactly what it, what it is that the city of Hawthorne is doing. So I try my best to give them the answers that what they're looking for. No problem.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
To the chair. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Kwanah, for jobs well done. You know, Community Service Department, you guys constantly busy on the weekends, you know, Saturdays after Saturdays, you know, nonstop, so to put all those events together, so I appreciate it very much. And then with the pool and all the other activities going on. Eric, you know, you're everywhere, you know, you're almost like the face of Hawthorne in a sense. But yeah, the, I'm glad to see that our numbers on the social media have, have continued to increase, and that is fantastic, because I can see people pay attention and what Hawthorne has been doing, all these activities. My question to you, is it possible for you to do reels on Facebook?
Yeah, so, so we're starting to do a lot of reels of Facebook. We haven't done, done it on Facebook. We, we always do them on Instagram. They actually have a section just for reels, they have a whole editing tools just for reels. I look into doing it for, for Facebook.
Fantastic. And Kwanah, this morning, you know, the Zella Davis Park, tremendous achievement that, that we have done there, and thanks to your leadership and all the teams that you put together with Vaughn, and all the departments, all the partners that we had, three million dollars that renovated that park, and that park is state-of-the-art. And like I say, it just took a woman's vision to make that park, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
So these are my favorite people right here. I love these people. They are really amazing people. Thank you so much for your presentation. I can't say enough about the work you both do. You really work hard. Eric, this is like, what, your fourth event today? It's like, this guy, I see him all day long at different places, and then he still goes over to Inglewood and represent the city of Hawthorne, so let's give it up for him.
And Carson. When you love what you're doing, that's, that's the best part.
And he goes to the, Carson for the Galaxy Games.
Oh, wow, okay. So I'm wondering if, or maybe this is a directive to our city manager. It's been, what, ten years since we increased some of our fees at Community Services? And so my directive to the city manager is if you can do some kind of analysis so that we can increase our fees in community service, because from my understanding, we haven't had increased in ten years. And that, that's quite a long time for us not to increase our, our events. And so with all of the activities that are gonna be coming, our city is gonna be full of folks. So it, it gives us an opportunity to capitalize on that revenue, but also to increase our revenue, because we haven't done it in so long. So I would like to see us be able to increase our fees, so my directive to the city manager is to do analysis, bring that back, and see where we can increase our fees. The other thing that I wanted to ask you was, summer camp supplies, what is that for?
So usually during the summer, we have summer camps, or we'll have sports camps, and that account is to pay for balls, nets, things like that.
Because it seems awfully low for the entire summer. It's only a thousand dollars, and, I mean, I feel like that's just like a week for the kids, so I would like to see that line item increase some.
What we can do is look at mid-year, if Kwanah or the department goes over budget, we can correct that during mid-year.
Okay.
I did ask staff to strategically look at cutbacks due to the, the taxes that are different from previous year and to help with City Hall. So I think Kwanah strategically looked at supplies, that she has enough to get by this year, but if she needs more, we can make that happen.
Okay. And then the other line item was office furniture. I just wanted to know, does that include like new furniture for the Memorial Center, or is it furniture for the senior centers?
So that's exclusively for the senior center.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
To the chair, let me expand a little bit more on the fees, because, you know, one of the reasons that we want to look at those fees, also, you know, the rentals, like our footsoff, right, because I understand some of our neighbors is charging three hundred dollars an hour, and, and they have to rent it for two hours. So, and then our fees is only fifty dollars. So we need to start, you know, be competitive out there, and even the, the use of the pool, too, that is very low, and we cannot do that, because everything have gone up. Utilities, electric, water, gas, everything have gone up, and we are swallowing those costs, so we need to create a little bit more revenues, because like we see, we see three million dollar deficit on the sales tax, and God knows what's gonna happen, you know, in six months. So we need to reevaluate all our fees over there, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, because we're spending a million dollars to operate our pool, and we're only getting a very small amount for our pool, so we definitely deserve an increase. It's kind of like when our employees get a raise, where our services need to get a raise, too. And we have to be competitive, just like Montero said, with other cities as well. And I think, in terms of the media that we're, we're doing, I wanted to see, and I don't know if this is your, your guys' department, but we talked about this a, a couple of council meetings, where we could get Wi-Fi at the parks.
Yes, we do have Wi-Fi at most of our parks.
We do, and we have Josh from IT that's gonna present next, and I'm sure he's gonna cover that.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you so much for your presentation, and Eric, thank you for your presentation, and really truly appreciate you guys. Oh, this is what I wanted. So if we can do a reel on the social media and add it to the website, why you should come to City of Hawthorne, to let the folks know that are gonna be coming to, to California for the World Cup and the Olympics, if we can have a reel that's going saying, this is why you should come to City of Hawthorne.
And Katrina's gonna lead that.
She's gonna lead that, okay.
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Kwanah, I want to thank you very much. I'm very business-minded, and I know that that's where our money comes from in the city. We've got to increase our businesses and not miss out on opportunities like the Olympics. And so I greatly appreciate you taking the lead on this and branding our city so that we can stand out when the Olympics come, so I appreciate that, and, and that we're at least thinking about that, because even though it's one-time money, that one-time money would be nice, you know, so I appreciate that. When you said online swim classes, online registri, not online swim classes, but online registration for swim classes, what day was that gonna open?
That starts on May twenty-third.
May twenty-third? And that's easy to find online?
Yes, you can either do it online, or if you prefer to come in person, so that you can get assistance in learning how to do that, you can do that as well at the Memorial Center.
Perfect. And you've always been so helpful. Again, you have such a great personality and very helpful, even before I became city council, Mike, because I have grandchildren, and so they do a lot in the community, and you've always just been really helpful, so I appreciate that. That shines through. And then for Eric, you know I love you so much, you do so much for the businesses in our city, and the work that you put out is tremendous, very professional, very polished. I can only give you kudos from the people that we've done through the meet and greet and through the Business Beats. I mean, people are literally in tears when they get to see what you've done for them. And it's just a little short meet and greet out here, you know, you do a little thirty-second spot, and they feel, they feel like they're a part of a community, that one little thing, you know, and so you're doing a great job with our businesses in the community, and the work and effort that you put out is just primo quality work. I'm very proud to, to be here in Hawthorne, so thank you very much, both of you.
One quick comment on, on my part. Thank you, councilmember colleagues, for sharing your concerns and ideas. So I just, I want to make sure that the community services, the, the mission of the community service group, our parks, our programs, our recreation activities, our pool and different things, the purpose is to be able to give access to our community, to provide recreation opportunities. I don't think we should lose sight of that. Do we, do we have an element in our, in our community that's, might be challenged economically? I think we still do. So I think we just really need to be conscious that we don't, in my opinion, is that we don't necessarily look at it as a business. El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, and they do a lot of, let them do what they want, but the thing is, do we have to follow just, this is not a business opportunity, it's actually a servant, it's an offering. I mean, we're using tax money to, to be able to offer these services to them at a discounted price, so I think we just need to keep that in the back of our minds and not lose sight of that when we're looking at these fees, et cetera. Maybe it's, maybe it's been a long time, maybe Kwanah and Vaughn will tell us, hey, you know, it's been a while, a while since we've raised them, maybe it's been ten, fifteen years. We could raise it a little bit here or there, but just, I don't think we should be looking at it as a, we might end up not having even, you know, money in, money out type of deal. It might still be something that we're spending to be able to offer to the community. Sometimes people can't afford certain things, so they come to their city. Sir, were you gonna say something?
Yes, it runs right into your, your remarks here. Kwanah, can you briefly talk about the subsidy we received from the Park Foundation and how Hawthorne residents were able, you said subsidized, but what does that actually mean?
So specifically for the baseball program, I think it's fifteen dollars to register, so through the Parks and Recreation Depart, oh, Parks and Recreation Foundation, they are gonna pay the fees for all Hawthorne residents. So for every Hawthorne resident that register for baseball, it will be free.
No, thank you, just, just my comments, and I just, we need just look at it like that carefully.
That's a very good comment, Mr. Mayor, so we'll be compassionate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presenter is Josh Armstrong, IT specialist, executive.
Check out Josh.
Guru. Thank you, Josh.
Man of many talents. But of course, it is with my team, though, that they were able to do it, so. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and Mr. City Manager. This coming year, among the many projects the IT department is engaged in, the two overarching initiatives that I like to highlight are expanding and strengthening the city's infrastructure, which includes the core network, wireless access, desktops, and CCTV, as well as continuing to, to enhance our cybersecurity posture to protect our information systems and ensure the continuity of the city's operations. Before we, we look ahead, though, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on what we've delivered over the past fiscal year. We've successfully upgraded the city's core enterprise platforms. This is the Tyler solution, including the permitting, the cashiering, the HR, and the Three One One systems, bringing new features, better performance, and improved usability for both staff and our residents. We've launched the city's new multilingual AI chatbot, Nate, on our website, deployed and expanded the worldly translation tools to, to the city council meetings, and we began the deployment to our public counters. We've also rolled out the updated mobile tools through the My Hawthorne Three One One app, making it easier for our community to connect with, with city services and report issues. This also includes transitioning the app to its own standalone branded version with the city logo that our residents can download to their handsets, instead of the, the older My Civic app. On the infrastructure side, we deployed new workstations across multiple departments, replaced aging wireless access points. We do have Wi-Fi in all of our larger parks, including the new Zella Davis Park, and supported the network planning and relocation efforts tied with the senior center project and upcoming City Yard project. Throughout our, throughout it all, our team has responded to almost eight thousand service tickets, supporting every department, the police department, and our public safety agencies through the RCC and our regional radio system, Joint Powers Authority. Looking specifically at, at public safety, our work through, through the Public Safety Consortium, the RCC Dispatch Center, and the INSB Radio System, we work through many enhancements and innovations, such as an AVL integration with Los Angeles County Fire, numerous system upgrades and technical support, as well as custom interfaces for the neighboring cities that we support. Those cities that, that actually latch on to Hawthorne for various services are cities of Gardena, Hermosa Beach, Manhattan Beach, Culver City, El Segundo, Renando Beach, Torrance, and El Camino College. Locally, within our police department, we supported the infrastructure in, in support of their drone program, supporting numerous online applications, as well as the construction and build-out of the real-time information center, an incredible new resource for Hawthorne PD and the community as a whole. Looking forward, the network and Wi-Fi expansion project, to which we have a hundred and thirty-five WAPs in, in the city today, we have twenty-five new wireless access points coming on, online soon, and we're expecting to double this over the next two years. This project is, is one of the most significant infrastructure improvements that we're undertaking. We're looking to replace the end-of-life equipment throughout the city facilities and parks with faster, more, more secure, higher-capacity network access devices. These upgrades will strengthen internal operations, expand public access, and lay the foundation for future demands, which includes supporting the new facilities that we're building, such as the senior center, the City Yard, and the City Hall complex itself. Reliable network and wireless access has, has become essential, not just for staff operations, but also for community members to access services and for public safety coordination. This project also includes replacing all the devices that are not Windows eleven-compatible. In parallel, we're continuing to advance our cybersecurity protections. This, this work is, is not just about safeguarding data, but it's about ensuring the operational continuity and protecting the people who rely upon our systems. This year, we're, we're expanding our deployment of our Sentinel One product, the endpoint protection. We've expanded our security operations center, monitoring platform, and deepening our partnerships with CALOES, CISA, and through a grant through the city of Los Angeles, the Regional Cyber Coalition, to align with the ever-evolving, and quite frankly, the moving target of cybersecurity standards. We are also strengthening the internal safeguards through We are also strengthening the internal safeguards through citywide multi-factor authentication, regional regular cybersecurity training, and proactive system testing. As we modernize the public-facing services and expand connectivity, security remains integrated at every level, from the staff laptops to the Wi-Fi access points to the online portals. And of course, we continue to strike the careful balance between the strong, strong security and practical usability, trying to keep the systems safe without making them hard to use. But, Chief, sorry, you still gotta change your password regularly. I tried. Beyond these core priorities, ITS continues to support the departments across the city. We're providing technology planning for the capital projects, improving internal systems through collaboration, and helping the departments modernize workflows. We're actively participating in numerous interdepartmental committees, contributing to the policy development, the infrastructure planning, and digital strategy citywide. From supporting the day-to-day operation of all the departments to preparing for L-28, the ITS department remains committed to ensuring the city's technology foundation grows alongside our community's needs. I'd like to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, be more than happy to take them.
Yes. To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Josh. Wow. I was trying to keep up with you, and I was writing stuff as you were saying it. I don't know, how long, how long have you been here?
It'll be thirteen years in September.
Were you here during that whole, man, meltdown that we had, the infrastructure that was literally, there was an incident that occurred, and people from all over the world started hitting us up on the internet, and it just, it just totally fried everything. And at that point, we were like, we were like, I mean, just beside ourselves, because who would have thought, right? But here we are, 2025, we're stronger in our IT systems, in our deliverables with regards to cybersecurity, and efforts to address and educate the workforce that clicks on a computer every day to assure that they're not contributing to that. But you're doing amazing work, you and your team. I mean, I had IT problems just today. And yeah, sure, we could forget our passwords every now and then, but you guys are on it, right? I can't believe how many tickets you've served, eight thousand. And we're not fully finished in the year, so, you know, triple, double, I don't know. That's just amazing. I think the worldview and your team, especially when we had the AI, you know, come on, you took that, you know, and worked hard on that, and other things that came in the pipelines, including, you know, the chat box, including our AI systems and worldly translation services. I mean, we've come up along, for a long time needed, right, long time coming. So I just want to give you kudos to you, your staff back there, everyone that has contributed. And I know I've had mentioned to this, to you previously, I know sometimes we're, we're short-staffed in IT, and IT's, it's challenging, because there's a lot of great minds that are contributing to, to the IT world. And lots of times, especially our millennials who are genius at it, want to work from home. And, you know, we need to sometimes have you here, but I want to keep pushing, HR, Vaughn, you, to keep doing what you're doing in providing great services. And, you know, really, really, maybe sometime we could do an educational component to address the cybersecurity, or using, you know, our Hawthorne dot.org. And Vaughn, I know, is always working on that when he has workshops with staff, and maybe we could just really, you know, in the new fiscal year, make, make, make something out of it that could be fun and could be, you know, festive in a sense. Doesn't have to be, you know, oh geez, IT stuff, you know. We can make it fun, we could make it festive, but I'm always learning, and I enjoy that. And so just want to say thank you to you and everything that you said here. I mean, there's a lot. And, and I was trying to keep up with you. There it is, but.
That was a dispatcher, so I used to speaking fast.
Thank you, and once again, you're looking sharp. Thank you, appreciate you, thanks.
Yes.
To the chair. I want to say thank you for your presentation, truly appreciate it. I know you mentioned eight thousand, I'm sure I'm probably seven thousand of those tickets, but I, I am working towards lowering those tickets. But I just want to say, I thought what, what was so amazing is the interactive thing you did at the Business Expo, and I would love to hear the feedback, what you got in terms of which, was it the, this was it, the outcome of the logo that you requested at the Business Expo? You were like asking people what do they prefer with the app?
What we had running at the Business Expo was more of a IT-related quiz to kind of test your knowledge of IT. Work kind of as a promo, and as folks come up and started asking questions, and we'd start to ask them questions, and then direct them over to the HR's booth.
Okay, well, thank you so much for, for that. I felt like that was kind of cool and pretty popular, bringing people there. And I just want to say thank you so much, and yeah, I'm gonna try to decrease my requests for, I know I've already got mine for this year, but just, just give me a couple more. Thank you.
No worries, no worries.
Thank you so much, Josh. I really appreciate your help. You've helped me set up my computer and done a couple of upgrades on my equipment, printer issues I've had. So I, I see what the, your level of professionalism and the level of professionalism with the rest of your team, so thank, thank you and to them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh. Well done.
Thank you, Josh.
We have our last presenting department, division, Hawthorne Police Department, Captain Chris Port.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody, mayor, mayor pro tem, council. We're gonna dive into the police department and some of our accomplishments from this past fiscal budget, and what we're doing in the year to come, all while keeping our community safe and our businesses safe at the same time. First and foremost, we hired five police officers this last year, that's twelve total in the last two and a half years, which makes up for about ten percent of our sworn service. We hired three full-time parking enforcement officers, we hired one property officer, we hired one support staff as a records tech, and another jailer position. A big challenge in our profession right now is our retention and recruitment. And I have to say that the City of Hawthorne is really a unique place, because we are, as we spoke about earlier, almost fully staffed. And as you know, a lot of other agencies and organizations put up signing bonuses of upwards of seventy-five, hundred thousand dollars per applicant, either lateral over to be a new hire. We spend zero money doing that, and we've retained not only our, our officers, but it's those, those long-term officers that really campaigned for us and our organization, our reputation. And to be quite honest, a big part of it is the overwhelming support that all of you from the DIES give us every time that you have a chance to do that. Officers, when you're looking to get hired, or you're looking to lateral somewhere, a big part of what you look at is the support of the city and the city council. And we get that overwhelmingly, and for you being as vocal as you are, all of you, in regards to what we do, I want to say thank you, because that helps us with our recruitment, and you're part of our recruitment team without even really knowing it. So I appreciate that. Some of the things that we've continued to do, or we were part of this last year, was our tactical medicine program directed by Dr. Joe Nakagawa, has conducted first aid and CPR training, provided first aid kits to over three hundred and fifty civilian community members over the last year. The police department training unit has implemented a new daily training program called the briefing room. And what this allows us to do is provide a structured briefing every day for our morning shift, our night shift, and it allows our officers to stay in the know with legal proceedings, changes in the law, refreshers on search and seizure, use of force, and things like that. So it really keeps our officers sharp and really up to date on the update and current issues that are going on with community policing. The Hawthorne Police Department, as part of Area G contingency, deployed six sergeants, thirty-one officers across nine assignments, primarily focusing on support for the Eaton Fire in Pasadena and Altadena. And this is all while, over about a week, week and a half time, where we're also juggling our six to seven hundred calls for service per day in Hawthorne. So we're abroad, providing security and safety for the victims of the horrific fires, but also we're able to meet our, our standards here in the city and keep the boat going. A big part of what we started getting going with this year is our Real-Time Information Center that went live in July of 2024. Currently staffing consists of two investigators and drone pilots, one sergeant and one lieutenant. The current operation hours are from zero to seven to ten o'clock at night, Monday through Friday. So going forward to 2025, 26, we're continuing our partnerships with the Community Services Department with movies in the park and all the other different events that go on throughout the city. We like to support all the different initiatives through the city, and you'll always see our trailer with our explorers and the canines and our armored car vehicles out there for the kids to play on, whether it's the Touch a Truck event, or any of the concerts, or any of the other things that we do around the city. We are committed to monitor and monitor the opening of all the cannabis-related, cannabis-related businesses within the city limits, establish protocols to address community concerns, and maintain the safety and security of all the surrounding neighborhoods. So far, between the three operating cannabis dispensaries, we've had zero calls for service. And through our different technologies, we're able to monitor any and all aspects of their businesses inside and out, as well throughout the, the community in the immediate area. We've been setting the standard of what that should be, and we're doing a really, really good job, so we're gonna keep that going as well. We're gonna continue to focus on the medical director position as a regional resource with potential additional agreements for regional police departments. Continue technology-based foundational build-out for any potential future timed parking or permit parking with Public Works and our IT department. We're gonna complete our forensic lab accreditation, which will allow our CSI lab to go above and beyond and deliver faster, quicker results, not only for what's going on in our city, but the surrounding areas, hopefully down the road. And our integration into the new CAD, which is gonna go through RCC, which is the Computer Automated Dispatch System, which will go live some point in the next year or so, and that'll affect all the different agencies that that city, for that organization that they dispatch for. The last few things I touched on there are, when we start talking about the doctor, our crime lab, and the Real-Time Information Center, and the CAB. As we all talked about, we know that we're going towards the next few years with all these major events that are gonna be occurring in Inglewood. And Hawthorne is gonna be the first city of contact from Inglewood. We have the best spot to be, we're gonna be, we're organized enough to regionally want to have everyone getting on the same page together, because as we've all discussed in prior meetings, for all these different Olympics and the Super Bowl and everything else that's going on, the planning needs to be happening now. And so we're looking at our partner cities that are all jumping on some of the same type of software and same infrastructure that we are with our Real-Time Information Center, and it's gonna allow us to have a regional approach to some of these things going forward, and we're preparing for that now. We believe that's gonna be the way of the future going forward with law enforcement is a regional approach, and we're trying to set the standard of what that's gonna look like through our department. The really, the only increase to any funding that we're looking for is really to go to the Real-Time Information Center, and that's gonna allow us to really look for, look and be able to monitor the entire city in real time. We're moving to be able to operate that Real-Time Information Center on a twenty-four-hour period, and that way we can monitor our parks, our streets, our alleys, and businesses all in real time, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and we're looking for buy-in from our regional partners to allow us to offset some of that cost of what that will look like. But we're all working on the same products, we're all using some of the same systems, and it only makes sense for us to continue down that venture together. With that, I think that's all I have for you. I'll take any questions. I know it's kind of short and sweet, but if you allow me to sit up here and talk about everything the Hawthorne Police Department's doing, I would never leave.
Thank you, sir. Ready? Thank you, it's me. Thank you, Captain. Outstanding. Like you said, you know, the police department is our bread and butter, technically, because it kept us safe, and you guys have done a tremendous jobs. Like I said, in all these events, you guys out there doing community policing, public relation, and it's been, it's been a tremendous honor, you know, to have at least ninety-five, ninety-five office right now in place that will help maintain our city safe. One other question that you guys have not mentioned is the, our airplane. What happened to our airplane?
Our airplane's still there. It's been up a few days a week. We're still working through some of the kinks in regards to some of the software that's up there, but it's up in the air, flew a couple times last week, and it's been a big thing to take on, but we're moving in the right direction. It's still available, it's still, it's still up in the air.
Okay. And the other, the other thing that I was going through the budget, besides Inglewood doesn't count, but what you guys are doing to decrease the overtime?
That's a great question, fair question. So when we hire police officers, as I mentioned earlier, we were down about two and a half years ago, we were down about ten percent of our workforce. When we hire police officers, we don't get them, we don't, we're not able to use them right away. We have to go to the police academy, that's four or five months. They come back, they do field training, that's another four or five months. So essentially, we're losing those officers for about a year before we can actually plug them in as manpower, per se, into, into what we're doing. So if you're looking at twelve officers, they, they now take the spot of that budget. So the salary savings that we would always be able to use to offset some of our overtime costs, we're not able to do that over the last year or so, because we've actually had those budgeted spots fulfilled, which is great, but they're not able to be used over, until about a year after they're hired. So we have to kind of fill that void with covering shifts. We have to fulfill our obligations over at SoFi Stadium and some of the Inglewood events. Once we've started coming to complement, come up to complement, we've actually started to really restructure who we're sending to Inglewood, and really trying to work that as more of a revenue for paying for officers to be there than losing money sending higher-paid officers over to that, over to those venues like our lieutenants and our sergeants and stuff like that. So it's in the works, it's one of those things, it's a great thing that we've fulfilled our, our complement, but at the same time, it kind of handcuffs us with having twelve people that aren't really available to be out there on the street just yet, but we still have to maintain our level of service. And so unfortunately, we had to eat that a little bit on the overtime this year. But it is being addressed, it's a very serious question, and very rightfully asked, and it's being worked on, I promise you that.
Thank you very much for that. And the real-time thing is, is real, right?
It is real. We're talking about not getting the calls within minutes, we're talking about getting the calls within seconds, using our drone as first responder program. And like I said, the camera systems in there, we're able to get two calls before the calls are even being dispatched based on some stuff that we have going on. So it's, it's been a game changer, it's been beyond successful, and you could play highlight reel after highlight reel of how we're keeping the community safe, we're, we're allowing our officers to have the proper response stance and attitude as they respond to calls, because we're able to get that information to them before they physically get there.
All right, fantastic. And thank you for bringing up the cat at the RCC.
You got it, it's a big part of what we're doing.
Long-term waiting.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
To the chair.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, mayor. Thank you, Captain Port, thank you, Captain Lane, thank you, chief. Excited for what you already are doing with regards to community outreach with your trailer. That's very popular. I think ultimately, you know, I, I could see building out to two trailers with two different, you know, areas of the community being covered for, you know, the west and the east and all those in between. But very popular, especially with our canine out there with the children. I love the fact that, you know, the, the drone project and all that that we worked towards here last year is, is going strong. And I like the fact that in real time, you're able to you're able to capture exactly what's happening in saving efforts to be, you know, in a vehicle trying to get there, right? So that's all making a difference. You touched on upcoming events that are huge in nature that Inglewood's gonna be hosting. However, you said it, we're gonna be the mutual aid that's being called on, right?
We're the closest to them.
Exactly. And when, there's been, you know, remarks in the past with regards to how Hawthorne's being, you know, overpaid and, you know, with regards to the overtime aspect of it, but I know that the city of Inglewood and other agencies are responsible for the reimbursements of those dollars to Hawthorne. And so I, I like the fact that that we're keeping tabs on, and we're assuring that mutual aid is ultimately billed where it needs to be, right? I think everyone has to take care of their own, and I think that we've have stepped up in many ways and provided all kinds of different services that they're kind of taking a lead and seeing what we're doing. And so I like all of that. I also wanna give kudos to just the other things that are happening with regards to your crime lab, your real-time services, and then you made mention of the five new hires that, that now we're at ninety-five. So we're, are we, we're almost a hundred percent?
We're just about there. We're a few shy, but we're doing that, as the city manager said, strategically.
Yeah.
And we've done such a good job that we've put ourselves in a position to where we can really be strategic about when we're hiring throughout the year and actually, more importantly, who we're hiring.
Right. And I know it's, it's been something historically, you know, I don't know what it is about Simi Valley, but everybody wants to go out there to Simi Valley. They start here and then, you know, they end up in other areas. But I remember when I was city clerk, just like Dana, you know, swearing in a lot of police officers and then going, hey, where's such and such? Where'd they go? But I really appreciate the department, our Hawthorne Police Department, everyone, our men and women in uniform, just the engagement that's taking place, and, and it's going strong. And that's something that has really stepped up. We, you know, we've come a long way. I've been in Hawthorne almost forty years, and I see the difference. And I'm just delighted to know and to offer to the community that our police are amazing and each and every day are looking out for not only the residents' interests, but the businesses too. And the businesses oftentimes calling and giving us, you know, kudos and, and how quickly things are done. So I really appreciate that. I know that there's been a request for more parking enforcement, and I'm gonna admit, I got a ticket, parking enforcement ticket. I paid it the next day.
They're vigilant. They're out there.
I, I'm telling you, I parked and I totally forgot that it was no parking for street sweeping. Went to grab a bite to eat, came out, and sure enough, the ticket was there. But hey, at the end of the day, read those signs. I know, I know, I, I, I kind of ignore that because I have my own place where to park, but definitely need to read the signs, especially the street sweeping signs. And I like the fact that we helped our residents when we had issues during COVID and whatnot, and those restrictions and whatnot was lifted and to help our residents. And so I wanna make sure that we're contributing and letting the community know what, you know, whenever those, those times are, are around, that we're gonna be there to support our residents, to assure that, you know, that there's a soft parking enforcement going on, right?
Absolutely.
But thank you for your report, Captain Lane and Captain Port, and thank you, Chief, sitting back there, very quiet. Yeah. Thank you so much. Good report.
Councilwoman Johnson and then Councilwoman Manning.
I, I just wanna tell you how grateful I am that you guys, the three of you are so much better at keeping our city safe than you are at your golf game.
Wow. There's shots fired up here.
Just kidding. You guys did great. But I, I had an opportunity when I first came on board to come and see what you guys do, and I was so impressed with your real-time piece that you guys have. And that makes me feel so much better. It definitely is a warning, don't pick your nose in the intersection thinking you're not gonna be on camera, because we can see it. And the drones do save lives, getting up and getting in the air before the police officers get there. Because the last thing we wanna see or hear about, because you guys do keep us up to date on what's going on in the community, and we appreciate that, but we don't wanna hear one of our officers got hurt, one of our community members got hurt, and it could have been avoided. So I appreciate that we have cutting-edge technology here in Hawthorne, and it definitely is a, a warning to criminals who wanna come in our city and commit crimes. You don't come here. It's not worth your time, because we have cameras inside, out, above, beside, everywhere, and we know you're coming. We know what you're doing. So we appreciate you very much.
You will find out, is what we like to say.
Exactly. Or they can F A F O.
This Katrina.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much, Captain Lane and Porter, for your presentation. So I have a few questions. One for clarification and understanding. So the lying item metro and narco, I see a, a pretty huge increase, and I just wanted to know, what is that for?
So we have two task force officers that are assigned to two different D E A teams, and then our narcotics team at our place works regionally and spends a lot of time working hand-in-hand with our D E A and different partners around Southern California. Unfortunately, the people that are involved in narcotics trafficking and/or people that we're looking for, a lot of times they're used for finding people that are outstanding, that are wanted for crimes. They don't move during banker's hours, and they don't call us ahead to let us know when they're gonna do their stuff. It would be nice if they did, but they don't. And so unfortunately, with that group, they do put in quite a lot of hours, but they're also behind tonnage of narcotics, fentanyl, methamphetamine, anything that you can imagine that's coming off the street. And then what's the bigger disruptor for any of those organizations is their cashes being hit on its way back down south or other areas. And so from that, yes, they do spend a lot of time doing that, but we've switched over to have their overtime being paid through the asset forfeiture, which is one of the predetermined uses you can use it for. So we switched over to that. But a lot of the things that we do fund, some of the things, like our D F R program, is through a lot of their seizures and things that they do. So it, it is a big-ticket item number for them to be out the way that they are. However, the return for what they do is, speaks volumes.
So is that like a third party, or is that our employees?
They're our employees.
Okay.
They are a hundred percent our employees. They just, one's assigned to a task force, and then the other five or six of them are here, and then there's a supporting cast of metro officers that will help and go out and do the stops. And it's a, we're like a boutique narcotics team. So we come with the full service.
And how many people do we have on that?
We have five narcotics officers, a sergeant, and a canine.
Just one canine?
Just need one for the narcotics team.
Got it. Okay. The other question I wanted to ask you was, do we have a retention plan for our officers?
Well, for a plan, we really don't have a plan put together, because we don't have a retention problem, as per se. We do lose officers from time to time to retirement, and maybe a handful here and there that have left the state to pursue a different lifestyle, which I can't, you know, hit them for that. That's something that was a family decision.
Right, right.
But as far as officers leaving to go to other police departments to go work after they come here, I would say is less than one or two percent. Over the time I've been here, I've only seen two or three people leave to go to other departments that are in L.A., not a different state to go start a different life. So for retention, was what I kind of started off with, is our retention is actually a big part of our recruitment, is because there's so many officers that stay here for so long, they do their whole career here, and that speaks volumes, especially for other officers looking for a place and an environment that has the culture that they're looking for. And as I mentioned before, most importantly, the support of the council. So that, that's kinda how that all plays into, into itself.
Okay. And then moving to transit, that increased too. And so can you spend a little time explaining the increase for that?
The transit?
Mm-hmm. It's like right under real-time crime?
That's gonna be the funding that comes in through, I believe, Measure A. Prop A, sorry, through AC bars. It's funding from the county.
Okay.
So the increase isn't necessarily an increase expenditure on the city. It's an increase in funding that comes in through, through grant funding, through measure funding.
Okay. That is actually all I have, but just wanted to ask Felice if she could change airship treasury to airplane. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Are we good?
That was it.
Thank you so much, guys. Wonderful.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys, too. All right. Get a chance.
I think that goes without saying.
Right at the end, man.
Mayor Vargas, we'd like Felice Lopez to come up and conclude this presentation, if possible. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some additional questions for her.
Okay. She's coming.
And to the chat, also, Ms. Kimberly Mack.
Let's try to.
Yeah. You want me, or you want me to go first?
So folks, I mean, however you guys wanna approach it, but let's just try to focus in with questions, comments, you know, we could, we could laud them all, all we want.
To the, to the chair.
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to ask, maybe this be a directive to the city manager, but I know recently we've had a lot of protests with SpaceX, and that I know a lot of our officers are putting in overtime to, to assist their protests. So I'm wondering if we could do some kind of analysis to figure out how we could maybe charge them, or maybe they could spend the additional money hiring security, but that they're taking away from their protests is happening often, and we're putting in a lot of overtime. So I'm wondering if maybe we could figure out a way to submit some of that cost to, to them.
Absolutely. I'll work with Chief Tomatani on this issue to assess what type of overtime is being charged for community protests and items like that, and we'll work with the city attorney to see if there's a way to charge that back to the business.
Thank you.
Or if it's even appropriate, if maybe it's just a service we offer and we incur. But that's a very valid thing, okay?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I understand as a city, we offer services, but this is, this is quite, quite often, like this is more than, than usual that we're having to, and I think they have one coming this weekend. So it's a lot. It, it, it's happening a lot, and unfortunately, when, you know, the owner of the organization says something, it just continues to happen. And I just feel like when we talk about the money that we're spending in our police department, we're talking about the overtime, a lot of overtime is going to address this. And again, I know it's our responsibility, but this is more than normal. And so that's why I wanted to see if there's a possibility, some of those costs that we're having to pay, if somehow we can offset some of those costs. Also, for the non-departmental, the last page, five of five, I would be, you, you guys created new, new lying items from that, and so I would be wanting you to move fifty K thousand from community outreach to mental health and, oh, mental health and wellness. The other thing that I wanted to.
Can you give me a second, Councilwoman Manning? I just wanna get clarification from our city attorney. Okay. Note it. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to get an update on is how are we, how are we with collecting the fees for our business licenses? I know that we were working on trying to get money for that, but wanted to get an update on where we are as it regards to our license fees.
And collection, regular license fees or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, business license fees.
Okay.
I know we were doing a collection, and I think we had a third party that was working on that, but I just, no. Delinquent business licenses.
It's actually being done in-house now.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So we do have a third-party financial credit network, but we send them the collections. So once we exhaust all our, our, our collection efforts, we send it to them. And they all go ahead and, and they, they are our collection agency, yes.
Okay. And then if you can stay there, I wanted to ask about our short-term rental costs. I wanted to give a directive if we could make that a priority, because with all of the things that are gonna be happening, I know for a fact that there's gonna be an increase for people wanting to do Airbnbs. And I know this was something that we have been working on, but I just wanna make that a priority, because it's also an opportunities for us to be able to collect fees during that time of all the activities that are gonna be coming in.
So currently, we are doing it ourselves. We, we plan to submit an R F P for an agency to help us with the short-term rentals, but at the moment, we are doing it in-house. And so we're informing all of our businesses that are doing short-term rentals. What would you say, like manually? So we're actually doing it in-house, but Greg has more information on the short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I have a draft of an R F P already prepared, and I'm, I'm hoping to get that out by the beginning of June. And then hopefully by early fall, we'll have a consultant that will not only monitor for us and report delinquencies and so forth, but will also collect the fees and then credit it to our accounts. So it should be a turnkey operation. That's what we're looking for. We had another consultant that was trying to prepare something for us, but they just completely flaked out, and I fired him. But, so that's why we're behind schedule on this.
Yeah. I, I'm aware of that, but do, do you think that we'll be able to be in a position by the World Cup to?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yes. By the end of this, this calendar year, we should be up and running.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick question, and also for the city attorney, can we recuperate that money from that other company that didn't do their job?
Well, they did some stuff.
They did?
Yeah. It's gonna be a tough, tough battle. It may not be worth it when you consider all of the costs of litigation and everything.
Because, yeah, we paid them, but they didn't deliver.
We paid them a, a good chunk of money, but they, yeah, they didn't deliver.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
To the chair. Are we, Greg, are we looking at potentially offering other options other than, let's say, a year-long business license? Because I know some people that, we're talking short-term rentals. I know some people may only wanna rent out even their own home for a certain period of time, maybe three months or a month or whatever, but they're, they're not gonna do it all year long. Are we looking into avenues like that to try to bring in that revenue so they don't end up getting, you know, we have to chase them down? It's easier because we're trying to be more open to, you know, flexible would be a better word?
Yeah, not exactly. We are looking at ways of incentivizing short-term rentals during events like the Olympics, and that might bring in a few people for a short period of time. And we haven't worked out any details yet, because that's still a ways off. But it's not really the business licensing that's going to be a problem for them. It's the T O T. They have to pay transient occupancy tax as well. So if they only operate for three months, they just won't have a lot of T O T to pay.
Okay. And isn't? And isn't TOT collected via the apps that they use or are you talking about something outside of those?
Well, that's something we're going to have to work out with the vendor that we select.
Got you.
To the chair. Sorry. Well, I'm just pretending to be you tonight.
You can never be me, honey, trust me.
Just be nice.
So, so I want to, this is also a question, Felice, as far as the city clerk's department. I wanted to find out if the city clerk department have had a chance to research the cost to digitize all of our records and also, how long would it take to get that done? I know, I believe it's a very costly and long process.
If possible, if we can have the city clerk answer that question.
I can answer it. So, we are in the process of digitizing records, but we are not doing it the way that, well, just, I'll start with here. We have a proposal for Laserfish, which would actually digitize our records and it would actually put our contracts online. They do it for Torrance, they do it for several cities. That's about $78,000 a year. And so, we've decided to digitize records ourselves. We have DocuWare and they will actually store our records and we are going to probably call like South Bay Whip and work with a consultant to actually help us go through and, and complete it because we will end up boxing probably 150 boxes or so.
Wow. Thank you. That, that's it for me.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Quick question, we're not going to wait until all 150 are scanned to get some of them online, are we?
So, we're just trying to figure out how to get them online.
Okay, so, once you figure that out, as you scan, you'll get them up?
We still have to actually go through, we, we won't, when we get ready to box everything, we're going to actually box everything and then they'll digitize the records. But we, we have to kind of organize everything first and I don't think, I don't even know if anyone here remembers that ever being done because Diana and the clerk office have been here 22 years or so and it's never been done where we've actually gone through and systematically organized all of our documents and then digitized them.
And the contracts are probably not all in one location, right?
No, they're not.
Lot of work, lot of work.
Yes, that's why I'm hoping to work with South Bay Whip to get maybe a handful of interns and we'll likely have to shut our office down for three days or so or we'll, we'll plan that out with, we'll work with the city manager's office to plan that out.
No, thank you for mentioning that. I just really want to make sure that if it's interns, if it's people that are knowledgeable, because I wouldn't want to task this just to any.
Oh, of course not.
Amateur or anything, that's just, some of these are contracts that we refer to, you know, like, that are from like many years ago that are crucial for even our city attorney to be able to look at, so, our different departments.
Yeah, we'll work with a consultant that actually guide us through that, but we, we cannot afford to hire a consultant to actually come out and do that work.
No, no, I, I, I actually appreciate what you're saying, but this consultant has municipal experience. These consultants would have had municipal experience and know what we're asking, right?
Absolutely.
And know how to organize and catalog.
Many, many years of municipal experience and working with many cities.
Digitizing? Okay, thank you. Are we?
Yeah.
Close to finish? Let's go.
City clerk knows what she's doing. She's CMC, come on.
Aye, aye, pardon, sorry.
Historical records are important. I have a question. I, I was noticing on the non-departmental, there's a line item for SpaceX, Robert, and it basically says tunnel expenses, $10,000. Why do we have a SpaceX item? And this is the city of Hawthorne.
That, that item's been carried forward for quite a few years. And Akbar, do you recall exactly what?
What is that?
That item was for?
Which item?
The SpaceX tunnel expenses.
Yes, especially, it was done by private company and if we wanted to fill it out, it's going to take $10 million to backfill it.
This is 10,000. Yeah, I know, that's my question.
I think it's a carryover. We can do some additional research. Felice Polly can confirm this. We haven't used any money from there in the past few years. I think it's just a, a carryover account from when the tunnel was bored. We can research that, but to my knowledge, we have not tapped into that line item.
Anything further from my, rest of my council colleagues that are up here?
Yes, to the chair.
No, yeah, just, go ahead and then go back to her.
I want to ask a quick question to, to Kimberly Mack, please. It's not, it's, it's just to make sure that we are up to date. Kimberly, when you create your budget special for the Section 8 vouchers, it's my understanding that the new administration have proposed a 40% cut on the Section 8 vouchers. When you made this budget, do you take that in consideration?
No, we can't take that in consideration as of yet because we're still on a continuing resolution for this year's funding and that hasn't gone to Congress yet. So, we operate as business usual.
Okay, obviously, me. Okay, just the other question I want to find out, have you finished all the renovation of our properties that for the low incomes?
No, it's still in process. So, we got 22 units completed, we have 16 units to go and we're just moving slower due to lack of funding.
Lack of funding, okay. And, and the last question, it's not a question, but I just want to, for you to keep eye on request for proposal from the South Bay CAG. They, they receive additional dollar from the La Casa that they would not expect, was like 11 million dollar. So, they're going to probably put some request for proposal for rental assistance programs and even potential for low-income housing. And, and then also, they're going to give Hawthorne $200,000 from the proposition A for the homeless program.
Okay, will do.
Just keep those in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Going back, Robert, can you provide counsel illegal confidential with regards to First Amendment rights for protesting within the areas mentioned? Although I don't necessarily, you know, appreciate, you know, Hawthorne being a hub of, you know, a lot of upset folks for the, you know, caused by one individual. However, you know, got to keep in mind that there are First Amendment rights and so, I just want to make sure that we're not infringing on those and that ultimately, you know, we don't have any potential litigation. And that includes, you know, the business owner maybe saying the same, right? So, just, just to keep us posted on that.
Will do.
Thank you.
To the chair. Just wanted to find out, are, do we have to come, are we continuing our Bridge of Hope program? Where's the funding for that?
So, the Bridge of Hope program is currently funded on a three-year trial basis. We have the funding for the full three years. We are currently searching for additional funding through grants, through California grants and any other grants that come about. We are hopefully relying on the new Measure H. The county is now changing its system so that all homeless funding is coming from that source, which puts us at a disadvantage because now we are competing for the same pot. So, we're just working hard to find, you know, other resources to continue that program and hopefully we'll be able to do so.
Do we have a contingency plan?
We're working that out, too.
Okay, thank you.
Pleasure.
Oh.
I didn't get a chance, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, that'll last mine.
Okay, thank you. Kimberly, before you walk away, I know that we've been hit with regards to Section 8, right? Section 8, our, our, our funding sources for next fiscal year.
Not yet.
Okay, do you anticipate something like that?
Depends on whether or not the president gets his way. Usually, when the president makes a wish list, the way he's made it right now with the federal governments and all the grants, it doesn't go that way. Congress is very, you know, determined to provide for their states. So, we just kind of have to wait and see right now how that's going to end up.
Okay. All right, so, we're having a watch, legislative watch and in anything, you know, you, we will be either special counsel or something or a meeting with regards to a line item on those issues, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly, great job.
Kimberly, sorry, I, I might have missed the, and maybe didn't hear correctly how Mayor Protim Montero might have asked it, but, so, for our budget, the CDBG aspect of it, so, right now, we have certain aspects, certain, certain things that we have within our budget that are being covered by CDBG as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, and then we're talking about Section 8, you know, CD, CDBG is in fact being cut or is it one of those items that?
It's proposed to be cut.
It hasn't been cut yet, but I know it's been talked about and per your analysis, a lot of what the president has offered hasn't gone his way, but what if it does? So, what, all I'm saying is, have you already developed a contingency plan that if it does go away, that we're going to be covered and we'll be able to operate within your department and probably in the, with, within the whole city? Have you, do you have a contingency in case it does?
Contingency right now is programs being defunded. So, the commercial facade program, the home rehab program, those programs will have to stop unless the general fund plans on adding funding to those programs, which I don't see that happening. So, ultimately, it is going to hit the city hard in regards to funding. My department is federally funded, so that's going to hit our department hard. So, we're just doing a, a wait and see. I don't have a contingency right now for what they're considering because, for one, it can cause issues with staff, staff morale and everybody get upset about what-ifs and what should've, could've, wouldas and all of that. So, right now, we're just functioning on making sure that we're following all of HUD's regulations and they're just telling us that they're also watching and making determinations and not to act until we hear from them.
I appreciate and respect what you just said, but, you know, sometimes these things happen super quick, so I think it'd be wise just to start maybe just having something.
I think the contingency plan would be general fund, there wouldn't be any other options. So, if that happened tomorrow, it would have to be general fund or really staff, that would be the options. Because any grant that's available, every city.
Staff-related, right? Staff-related.
Absolutely, yes.
That's just a direct impact on staff, it's nothing else, right?
No, contingency plans, depending on qualifications, maybe we can backfill those individuals and housing to other departments. But as Kimberly said, as of today, we don't know what's going to happen, who's going to be needed, who, who's an employee that we would hold on due to seniority experience. But we are working on it, but if funds were cut today, we would have to make a decision if we're going to retain that staff from our general fund.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, just for the benefit of the residents and for ourselves up here. So, when we're talking about a staff, a, a, a CDBG funding cut and a Section 8 funding cut, where, are we talking both benefit, the monetary benefit to the recipients that are out there that are eligible for these programs or a combination of paying for the employees that manage these programs?
Oh, speaking of employees, well, I'll let Kimberly talk about, you know, the situation.
Correct, if there is a funding cut, it's going to be a total of both, the administrative fees and the fees that, the program fees. So, yeah, it'll be both.
Okay.
This would not happen until October 1st anyway, so, until September 30th, we're still on the old budget. So, everything is going to come up is October 1st, what the Congress is going to do. And then, like Kimberly said, sometimes the Congress can reverse Trump's decision. So, we will not find out probably until December 30th, that the new budget will begin October 1st for the federal government.
And, you know, I'm not saying that contingency plan, I'm, I'm offering that, I'm mentioning that, but of course, you're always going to be thinking constantly, what I'm going to do in case this goes away. So, you're, I know you're, it's in the back of your head, so you probably already have some, general ideas penciled out then.
For sure, we also want to properly notice anyone that's going to be impacted, our residents, whoever it is, our, anyone who's being assisted by our programs, our businesses, we want to let them know as soon as we know so they can plan as well.
And then, so, and then we have all this rest of the, the greater part of the budget that we have, which is keep our streetlights going on, our streets paved, our public safety officials paid for, et cetera, and, I mean, you know, what, you know, this, that whole balancing act. And do we impact that?
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Felice Vaughn, thank you, Kimberly. Hypothetically, CDBG, Community Development Block grant monies that are provided to organizations, agencies, nonprofit organizations that provide a service to community, right? Hypothetically, if there are budget cuts, I think the sacrifices for me would be these CDBG monies that ultimately go to Family Promise, the Rich Jones Center, St. Margaret's, New Star Family Justice Center, the Teen Center, you know, totaling 3 million or so. Yeah, but the, when you have, when you have to, when you have to, when, when you have to make a choice, what I'm saying, this would be the least, I would believe, this would have to be a sacrifice in a sense. This would have to be a sacrifice to continue, say, for since, for instance, other services, right? Other services, which would be?
The program services are different because as Councilmember Montero was saying, our mayor Protim, that's only 50% of the CDBG funds, right? So, we can't use those for other things. We can cut those funds, but that's only $179,000. That's not a significant impact to the whole department, you know, or for the CDBG in home, if they decide to cut those, that's not going to help our case. We would, of course, minimize the funds or reconcile the funds that we have left that we have already been paid or draw down on, that we have access to and figure out how to disperse those funds in the best way for the programs that are currently running.
And unfortunately, our CDBG funding sources through the years have dwindled, have gone down.
Historically, for all agencies, yes.
Okay.
So, how much is the, how much is the program?
On an annual basis, CDBG, we get about 1.1 million and for home, we get about 800,000.
Well, if we, if we have that issue, we'll figure it out. We have our wonderful city manager here to help us figure out how to, you know, continue, continue that, that, continue that. Could we potentially use our cannabis money to cover that, city manager?
I think we should focus on the budget. I think staff and myself and Felice have done a great job with the budget. When that time happens across the bridge, we'll have either a special meeting or a regular council meeting and address those items. I think, you know, under your leadership, my leadership, Felice, I think the city of Hawthorne has come up with solutions to all problems. I think when this problem, if it does happen, that we'll be prepared and as we speak about it tonight, we'll bring it back to the staff meeting, brainstorm ideas and hopefully it doesn't happen, but if it does, we will be prepared.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, through the chair, I would make a motion to accept this budget.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Felice, for this budget and we still have a surplus, so we have to say thank you, Jesus, because we still have $350,000 surplus and a lot of these cities are in negative zone, so at least we have a surplus. So, thanks God and thanks for, for all your talent to tabulate those numbers and with the help of all the head departments and city managers, thank you, thank you. And I will say, yes, keep going, appreciate it.
I second.
Please vote.
Vote is not even necessary.
No?
No, it's not necessary.
Oh, my God, you win everything.
I think he just wants to go home. I didn't either.
All right, just, that's, just a moment.
No dinner.
Okay, speed it up.
Actually.
Name was 12.
Actually, no, we need to, we did an offer the residents an opportunity to comment on this. So, we need to offer the residents an opportunity to.
Public comment.
Make public comment on the budget. Is there anybody wishing to express? Okay. See, no one, I declare the public comment section closed on this item. So, so we, yeah, so we're accepting it, we already, everybody accepts, right?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, item 14.
Item 14, now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of ordinance number 2257.
number 2257, amending Chapter 17 dot 76, sale of alcoholic beverages and adding Section 17 dot 76 dot 030, operational standards of Chapter 17 dot 76, sale of alcoholic beverages of Title 17 zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and making a finding of exemption and compliance with CEQA in connection therewith. No written communications were received.
Would anybody like to comment on this ordinance? If not, I declare the public hearing portion of this item closed, so ordered. Can you read it?
Ordinance number 2257, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Chapter 17 dot 76, sale of alcoholic beverages and adding Section 17 dot 76 dot 030, operational standards of Chapter 17 dot 76, sale of alcoholic beverages of Title 17 zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and making a finding of exemption in compliance with CEQA in connection therewith for introduction.
I'll introduce.
Okay, it's been moved and introduced?
Yeah, it's just an introduction.
Yeah, it's simple introduction, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have general matters, item 15.
Item 15, attendance at the 2025 National CERT Conference, Building Community Resilience, one brick at a time, from August 4th to August 9th, 2025. Recommended motion, receive and file.
Comment, comment. Discussion real quick before, who would be the attendees on this, on this, for this?
Can I, to the chair?
Do you have an explanation on this one? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I've attended last year, right? This is the CERT program with regards to emergency preparedness and all of the tabling that they do here at our events, the CERT green vest, you know, that I promote. And unfortunately, I'm not able to attend, however, I have a representative from the CERT community here from Hawthorne that would like to attend.
This is very valuable, about how many, how many participants do we accept? Okay.
And last year, we had two of us, and then there was, you know, communities from City of Gardena, Lawndale, South Bay communities that also have CERT programs and LA and LA County Fire.
Okay, and there would be, there could be possibly, there might be an additional person or two?
No, at this point, we have just, at this point, we have it at one.
Okay. Second, please vote.
Thank you.
This, we don't need to vote on this as well. You don't, you don't vote on general matters, it's receive and file. Recommended motion is just receive and file.
Yeah, Mr. City Attorney, you didn't catch that?
I'm sorry?
You didn't catch the?
Why is there a motion in a second?
Well, I didn't see that on the script, but on a general matter, you can't vote.
Let's, let's edit this correctly because I don't want to look silly up here, please. Calling for a motion.
Thank you.
Let's, let's move on to the city manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, the agenda reflects you have items 16 through 22 on the city manager's consent calendar. Before we begin, does everything look kind of in order? That should be okay. Go ahead.
Item 16, Economic Development Advisory Services Agreement with Cosmont Companies. Item 17, City of Hawthorne's Investment Report for the Quarter Ending March 31st, 2025. Item 18, Approval of Election Cost Payment to Los Angeles County Register Recorders for Fiscal Year 2024, 2025. Item 19, Third Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for Design Services, Third Amendment between the City of Hawthorne City and Office Untitled Consultant. Item 20, Progress Payment in the Amount of $433,694.32 Due to Doja Incorporated of Ontario, California for the Zella Davis Park Renovation, Part 24 dash 04. Item 21, Approval of Blanket Purchase and Order in the Amount of $34,000 to Roy's Flooring for the refurbishment of the Betty Ainsworth Gym Floor. Item 22, Fiscal Year 2024, 2025 Blanket Purchase Order. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar, may have a motion to approve items 16 through 22.
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I pull 18 real quick, just for a question?
Do you make a motion on the rest of them?
I'll make a motion on the rest.
Okay, second, second, oh, been seconded by Mayor Protem. Please vote.
I'm trying to vote.
No? Just back it up.
The voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, City Council. City Attorney's Consent Calendar?
Oh, no, item 18.
Ah, pardon, sorry.
Thank you, item 18. City, city clerk, do we know what that cost was for the election? We have a?
I don't have it in front of me. I believe it was somewhere around 170,000?
135, 156.
Yeah, it's 135.
Okay, very good.
Wow, is that based off of residents, like population? How is it, how do they do that?
You know, I'm not exactly sure of the exact breakdown of how that works. It's pretty consistent with what happened the year before last, so.
Okay, I'm just curious because I hear other cities have really high numbers, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Some of them, very high.
Okay, thank you. I'll make the motion.
Please vote. Yeah, my, my understanding is that it is related to the population.
Oh, okay.
And the number of precincts as well. Yeah, that's true.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
All right. City Attorney's Consent Calendar?
Item 23, Claim for Bodily Injuries by Samantha Perez, Esmeralda Perez, and Eric Guzman. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claims by Samantha Perez, Esmeralda Perez, and Eric Guzman. Item 24, Claim for Bodily Entry by Sylvia Lima. Recommended motion, the staff recommends that city council deny the claim by Sylvia Lima. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar, may have a motion to approve items 23 and 24.
I move.
Second.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Next, we have city council's discussion action items. Councilmember Johnson, please proceed with item 25.
Thank you. Given the fact that we have a lot of things that could negatively impact our general fund in the future, I'm actively searching for outside means to help us with our at-risk youth population. And one organization that I found is the Dream Center. It's located in LA off of Bellevue Avenue, and I'm looking to just explore a potential partnership with them and the city to assist us with our at-risk youth, well, just at-risk population. And some, the, the Dream Center has been around since 1994, and it's, they took over the, they purchased the Queen of Angels Hospital in Echo Park, and they actually have, I think, almost an entire block in that area. And the services that they provide is transitional home, housing for homeless families, veterans, youth emancipate, youth that are being, that have been emancipated from foster care. They also have a one to three-year recovery program for men and women, rescue programs from human trafficking, for human trafficking victims, hunger, poverty relief outreach, foster care intervention program, and adult education and GED programs. So my goal is, is to investigate further and opportunity of us potentially aligning with them and seeing how we can work this out, work out a relationship that we can take advantage of the services that they're already providing, just bring that into our communities. So I'll be working with Vaughn to further explore that.
Informational?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, do, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to move forward with anything until I let everybody know what.
To the chair.
Yes.
We also have Janet Kelly, Katrina, that, that is here in the city of Hawthorne, and Councilmember Montero, myself. Janet Kelly has Sanctuary of Hope that assists our foster youth and provides housing and placement for those that are displaced, similar services. She's located right on Hawthorne Boulevard by Wells Fargo Bank, right, her offices are above the Goodwill store.
And don't Richstone Family Center do, do the same thing?
It's family-driven, Richstone is family-driven, but Janet Kelly is experienced with the foster youth, teens that have already, you know, have left the system because of their age, are, you know, aged out, and then she assists them in finding housing. And so we've had opportunities through the years to do housewarming, parties for them, and jobs. And when she finds housing, we, you know, have been invited to go and, you know, go with the youth that's getting the apartment, or they're sharing an apartment, you know, we give them a welcome basket, and they're, you know, elated on their own, if you will. But she's been doing that for years, and she's been here in the city of Hawthorne for years, but she's a partner of ours here in the city with, I believe, other departments that use her as a referral when we ever need to have, like, say, for instance, grant funding, and we have to show, you know, as the lead agency, what we're doing to assist those. And so she's been a participant in, in those records as far as.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but now we have another additional service that we could add to the, our catalog of offerings to the community, so we need to take a look at that. Elected officials' reports recommendations, I'm a city clerk. Oh, and plus with the guidelines today, there's no go-bags, think about what you need to say when it's your turn. Okay, it's kind of a little bit irritating, so let's not, let's avoid that. Nobody steps over at each other, whatever order I choose. Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank our Hawthorne heroes. That was very moving to hear about that fire and to have our people jump in there, you know, without worrying about themselves, you know, selfless acts. And I'm very inspired by that, and I just want to thank everyone, especially our Hawthorne Police Department and Public Works, the guys who sacrificed themselves for that fire. Wanted to let you all know that recently, Joy, our deputy clerk, and myself attended the annual California Municipal Clerk Association Annual Conference in San Jose. It was really good, we learned a lot. Joy is en route of receiving her CMC and I, my MMC, and also becoming a mentor for other new city clerks. Digitization project, we kind of touched on that. Items will be boxed up, organized, we will come before council to, according to our record retention schedule, to discard what we can, and then to begin putting those contracts in place so that we can, when we find a surface, put them online. I want to say happy birthday to my mom, today is her birthday, and tomorrow's my father-in-law's birthday. Happy birthday, mom.
Happy birthday, mom.
Want to thank Katrina for a great event. Mother's Day brunch was really nice. My mom enjoys it every year. We had a good time, nice turnout as usual, and that's it for me. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move over here to, I'll vary it next time. Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you. I want to thank Unified Financial Credit Union and Del Cid Coffee for participating in our business meet and greets. Unified Financial Credit Union has been servicing over 300,000 members for the last 70 years, and they have a full range of products, some are low to no fees, and they can, often better than what you can get at the banks. So check them out at 14550 Aviation Boulevard here in Hawthorne. And Del Cid is the first woman-owned zero-trade coffee companies whose slogan is coffee is a fruit. And Del Cid Coffee, they harvest and do everything from beginning to end within their family on their own, and their, their, their farm is in Guatemala. And so we want to make sure that we thank them for what they did this evening and also support their business here in Hawthorne. You can reach them at delcidcoffee.com. And thank you Felice and staff for a wonderful budget presentation. I appreciate that. I'd also like to thank Wounded Heroes of America, Mike Toledo, for just being awesome in our community, helping out our veterans, and he did a golf tournament yesterday. I am sore as all get out, but that's how I learned our police officers were so great at golf. We're not going to talk about Vaughn, but thank you Vaughn and staff for their quick responses to our 311 app. I mean, I'm, I'm just amazed. Put it in in the morning, by the night, it's taken care of, and I, I greatly appreciate that because there's just so much potential in that app. If we can get the residents to use it, see something, put it in there, say something, put it in the app, and then start collecting that data so we can start analyzing where our, where some of our issues may be across the city. And I want to thank the staff for the ribbon cutting at Launchpad Learning, that was fun, and just seeing the little kids running around in the video was outstanding that Eric and his team put together. I mean, top of the line professional videos that you guys put together, so they were very appreciative, and they, they just wanted to make sure that everybody knew how, how much they feel like they're a part of the community. So thank you guys very much. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Katrina Manning?
Thank you, mayor. Want to first start off by saying thank you Felice for your detailed report and spending time to clarify and, and help me understand the budget. Appreciate that. It's always so nice to sit with you because you have such a pleasant, patient personality, and I really truly appreciate that. And you definitely don't get aggravated when we ask you questions over and over. You're so friendly and like, yeah, sure, and I appreciate that because sometimes when you don't understand something and you ask somebody and they have an attitude about it, it could be more frustrating. So I really do appreciate your positive energy and your patience in helping us understand this budget, so thank you so much. I also want to give a shout out to say thank you to the men that were honored today. We always appreciate your services. Real quick, I wanted to give a shout out to Beyond Autism Walk, I was able to attend that, and I was definitely in the rain, and let me tell you, my hair did get wet, but I stayed out there in the rain knowing that my hair would be a mess the next day. So thank you to all the people that came out to support. We show up, we, we showed love for this organization, so thank you so much for your second year. Also, I had an opportunity on Mother's Day, and after church on Mother's Day, I had an opportunity to go to the Bridge of Hope, and I had some barbecue, and we sat down and we talked, so it was pretty cool that I got a chance to spend my Mother's Day with some of the people there. Also, I wanted to say, Zella Davis groundbreaking was breathtaking. I have to give a huge shout out to staff and all of the funders that were involved. That place is amazing. I had on heels and my shoes got stuck, so I was on the monkey bars with bare feet. My heels got stuck, so it was fun, though. I mean, just being there and, and young man mentioned about they planted trees there, and the thought of, you know, you planting a tree and you're starting there and that tree grows with you as you become an adult was just so profound and had such a wonderful impact on me, thinking like, man, when you graduate from, from high school, that tree is going to still be there, but you were there at the beginning of it. So that is just so cool. Also, we, I hosted the Hawthorne Business Expo. It was really successful, we had a great time, and thank you to City of Hawthorne for showing up, really appreciate that. Also, we had Mother's Day brunch and award ceremony, and I just wanted to take a minute to just send another shout out to the Best Mobs, the awardees. Magrila Lopez, she's the principal of Zella Davis Elementary School, congratulations. Also, Camilla Fielder, she's associate principal at Hawthorne High. Also Camilla Fielder, she's associate principal at Hawthorne High. And then Julie Hammer, she's Holly Glen Elementary PTA Vice President. Those were the winners for our Mother's Day celebration. I just wanted to say thank you for all you do. Um, not just your family, but our family. Uh, the kids here in the city of Hawthorne, you guys take great care of them. So I want to say thank you. And then, um, what else?
Uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Anti-Race English?
Thank you, mayor. Let me just make mention real quick. There's a press release that came out today with regards to AI-powered, our chat, uh, bot to service. I want to just say thank you to IT Vaughn and everyone that, uh, uh, provided this for our My31, uh, MyHawthorne, My, My31Hawthorn, is it MyHawthorne311? Is that right? Yeah. So thank you for that, especially for the press release. That's great news. Um, the City of Hawthorne Community Services Department Recreation Swim Hours, uh, is, is up and going. The Aquatic Center. Thank you for that. Community Services, uh, Hawthorne Historic Society is going to be having a, uh, speaker series, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Lucy Wong, daughter of the Victory Chinese Laundry Owners here in Hawthorne on May 31st. That's a Saturday. They're also going to be hosting a pancake breakfast on Saturday, June 7th. Uh, want to thank, um, Community Services again for the, uh, newsletter. That's a great newsletter with lots of great pictures in that. Dodger Day, Opening Day. I know there's going to be lots of blue. If I could make it, I'll wear my blue too. Uh, at Jim Par- uh, Jim Thorpe Park on Saturday, May 17th from 9:00 to 12:30. That's going to be exciting for all of our youth and families. Thank you for that. I want to give, uh, uh, Hersonia a kudos and good to see her here today from, uh, Del Cid Coffee. Amazing. She's amazing. She's everywhere. She's on social media and you could just, you know, follow her. The coffee's great. I know some folks had coffee tonight, but I didn't want to have it just in case I couldn't sleep, but great coffee. Uh, I also want to make a shout out and kudos to Unify. Unify has been my bank for a long time. I want to thank Javier. Uh, he's the member of, uh, financial specialist and Evelyn Bal- um, um, Balthazar. She's the Notary Public and the Service Branch Manager. So thank you. Um, I, it's funny when you walk in and, you know, they're in the lobby and it's like, wait a minute, I know you. So thanks, um, Councilmember Johnson for inviting them and having them be a part. Uh, some folks don't know that we actually have Unify right on aviation, um, right off of Rose Crown. So if you have the abilities to bank with them, please do. They have a special going on. I told them I would give them a shout out. Um, let's see, the budget was great. Appreciate the hard work that every department, uh, provided and contributed. Uh, I know it's late hours. I'm going to shut up because I'm seeing folks already out there falling asleep, uh, for the sacrifices that we make. Thank you so much. We appreciate you guys and all that you're doing for the city of Hawthorne and its residents. Have a great night.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Phil Teller?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for staying with us. It's almost 10 o'clock. I appreciate it. Uh, first I want to say, you know, thank you to all the head departments that work with Vaughn and Felice to put this budget together because, you know, create a budget is a headache. Uh, so, and I know it have, it will take a lot of finesse, uh, to put all this budget together and then to give us all this, uh, uh, book, uh, to go through those line items and, and come up. So, um, it is, it is an honor, you know, to be sitting over here and to say that, you know, the city's in the great hands. And, uh, we should not be worried about what the future might think because I think we have a better, uh, bright future ahead of us. So thank you for that. Um, again, I want to say my hat goes to the, the, all the Hawthorne heroes, the public work departments guys and the, and the HPDK9 officer. Thank you for saving the life of the people at the housing that was on fire. Again, I want to say again, Public Works, uh, on the Autism Awareness Walk Day, it was raining. And they were there at seven o'clock in the morning and putting those tables and, and, and canopies and, you know, on the mud and even Ray made them walk too. So, so, so they were there walking with those kids. Uh, it was, it was, it was, it was fun. Uh, and then eventually at two o'clock, the sun came out. So, but it was, it was, it was a good, a good thing. Um, I have to say, you know, this morning at Zella Davis Park, uh, the renovation was a fantastic, beautiful park. If you have a chance, just go by there. Uh, I'm very proud of our Community Service Department and all the other departments that work on that park, the Brinkhold Partners, you know, that gave us $3 million to renovate that park. So that park now is a state of the art, right there in the middle of Monito Gardens and one of the very dense populated areas of our community. So that's going to be an asset for the children's and families. Um, I want to say that, uh, I did attend the SCAC, you know, conference and that's what I learned, that there was a, a lot of grants out there through them that we can apply, especially for transit, for mobility hub, for the, uh, transit center, for improving safety streets. So, uh, I passed that information to Vaughn and Selena and Agbar. So I know they're, they're fine arts when they come to create grants to get those funds. And also, um, talking about improving traffic in our city, uh, we've been in conversation with the City of Inglewood and also with the South Bay Cock and potentially we'll have a plan to alleviate traffic in our city during the, all these events that's coming up. Also I attend the CalCCA that is a Consumer Choice for Electricity, uh, under the, uh, the Clean Power Alliance. And I want to tell all the residents of Hawthorne, go online on, uh, cleanpoweralliance.org, CPA.org. There is a $300 rebate if you go buy an air conditioner to put on your windows in apartment buildings, uh, on Lowe's or Home Depot. Uh, it's instant rebate. You'll have $300, uh, instant rebate to buy that air conditioner, especially for the low incomes community. So, uh, all the people out there for the summer's coming, go buy the air conditioner to put on your window at Lowe's or Home Depot is a $300 instant rebate. But you go to the cleanpoweralliance.org and download that coupon and then you go to Lowe's or Home Depot and buy a air conditioner. Also I attend the 105 Express Lane, uh, uh, groundbreaking. Uh, Ms. Katrina Mann and I went there to represent the City of Hawthorne with all the metro and, and Caltrans. And the project is going to take almost two years to complete. That's going to be, you know, express lane from the, uh, the, from the 45s all the way to the Central Avenue. That's going to be improved traffic on the 105 freeway. Uh, for the people out there concerned about parking, uh, we've been working on this parking, uh, issues for almost, uh, three decades. And believe it or not, you know, uh, I did have some ideas when I came to this council and, uh, and it was shut down. And thanks God, now we have a visionary in our city manager and the Public Works Department that is looking for that parking study. And we're going to be able maybe to solve a little bit of this problem. Okay? So, uh, just for your information, on May 15th, this Thursday, uh, actually we're going to celebrate the second, uh, anniversary for our tiny homes, right? At 11 o'clock. And after that, you can go, uh, eat dinner with our wonderful HPDK9 unit. Then we're going to have the annual fundraising that will raise money for the K9 unit for the Hawthorne Police Department. So, uh, go eat the spaghetti. It's $7 for adults and $3.50 for, uh, children's under 10. So five to 7:00 PM we'll serve dinner and then we will have all these beautiful doll prizes. And thank you, Ms. Baldowa, that have gave me a handful of prizes. And I will have more prizes on Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Uh, again, thank you all the staff because you make us shine over here with all these beautiful programs, all these grants, all this money coming to the City of Hawthorne. And we the City of Good Neighbor and we are under, I believe we are under brighter future to come. So God bless you and a good night.
Uh, Montero, you said, um, tiny homes. What time?
11:00 AM.
When?
On the 15th.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Um, one thing that I just do want to highlight. Did I hear something?
This is very important.
No, no, we're going to, I'm going to pass it. Um, one thing that we don't want to miss that, uh, one of our councilman colleagues missed and that I kind of wanted to mention to was that LA County just passed legislation to forgive, uh, medical bills. Can you give us a brief?
Oh, yeah.
Comment on that?
Yes. Thank you, mayor. And, and LA County is actively implementing a program to forgive a significant amount of medical debt for residents. Uh, the program launched in December 24th and it aims to eliminate over $2 billion in debt. Initiating, uh, initially starting with $500 million, uh, according to LA Public Health. And the initiative involves purchasing and forgiving medical debt with a focus on low-income families. So thank you for reminding me of that and your support.
For sure. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Thank you, guys. So I want to kind of go through my items. Uh, been saving them. Actually, last, last meeting I wanted to mention some, but Hawthorne City Clerk, uh, Ms. Dana Williams Hunter. Um, I do want to support you in your efforts to, uh, digitize those documents and it's a tall task. Um, and we have to be cognizant and we, uh, I know she's moving forward with this, but you got to remember that there's all the physical paperwork that you have to organize first before you start feeding in, into the scanning systems. You can't just all of a sudden just grab whatever contracts or all documents are out there and figure it out later digitally. That's impossible. You got to have staged everything and have everything ready and know what you're going to do and know how you're going to catalog before it goes in there. Okay? Uh, so, uh, of course there's some AI elements that can help us, but when it comes to this type of sorting capabilities, um, that hasn't been fully implemented. So I'm willing to support you and just as long as you keep moving along with that task, that'd be great. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Hawthorne City View, geez, this is the best, man. It's like so beautiful, good quality paper too, let me tell you. But the articles are nice and, you know, I already have a little stack at home that I'm building up. So I hope I didn't miss any months, man. So if, if we did, let's see if we could print out maybe one or two. If I'm missing them, that's probably a possibility, right? Very good. Well, I like the, I'm old school paper, man.
Mr. Mayor, those are going to be collector items. Trust me.
I'm telling you, man. Seriously, you know? They're really nice and they're really well put together. So thank you to all those people involved with that. The Aquatic Center is open. So now we have a full market blitz on the marketing for the Aquatic Center, uh, year round. It's at a comfortable 80 degrees. So if you want to go relax, forget your troubles, just make it to the, to the pool during the weekday. Okay? And we, we're also working with some of those, uh, other groups out there that want to use the pool. So we made the accommodations. Right, Kwanah? Right? Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, the parking issue is very critical, yes. Um, and I know you, you came up with some ideas. I came up with some, with the T-parking and then all these different things. So, um, I know that we have residents that are coming up here and they're frustrated with that, but, um, I just want, I just want to warn you that, that, you know, any solution we come right now is going to be exacerbated. Any issues we have are going to be exacerbated by what the states, uh, asking us to do. The state is taking away local control. So we, we, we figure out something that's going to solve it today, but now they're saying that people could build like these ugly monstrosities, like all over the place. And so if, if you think we have parking issues right now, thanks to the state and some crazy wacko dude up there in San Francisco, Weiner, you know, the things are just getting out of control. I don't even know why he's still in office, man. Yeah, but he's very problematic and I wish he would just go somewhere else. Okay. So, uh, we hear you. Um, and we're conscious about what you're asking us to do, but we just have to, um, just be realistic, you know? Be careful who you vote for, you know? Because if they're not going to defend us and not defend our, you know, what we're going through, then, you know, it's just, you know, just, you get the government you deserve because you voted for it. So let's be very conscious of that. And then also, we have to also be conscious. All of a sudden, you know, our governor, a wonderful governor, all of a sudden has the, uh, you know, decides that now he's mandating every city to be able to remove all the homeless encampments that are out there. Remove them, you know, this and that, when it's his whole legislature, the senate and the, and the assembly up there that uh, tied our hands so that we could address the issue in the first place. Why didn't this guy, this guy's been around for like 10, 10, 11, 12 years. Why didn't he say anything like 10, 10, 11, 12 years ago when they were passing all this legislation? All of a sudden, because he's probably considering running for, for a president, now he, now he wants to take the bold move and just throw like a mandate to us and, you know, unfunded, unfunded. To be unfunded means just do something and you figure out how to pay for it, you know? So, uh, I don't know about him either. So, but either way, uh, we know what we need to do. Hawthorne residents first. So we just need to make sure that we protect you guys and do what we need to do to be able to keep you protected. We have a wonderful homeless task force. That's for sure. So, uh, one thing also, I mean, I know the president, everybody's, you know, has different opinions on the, on, on the presidency. But one thing that popped up and it just came up actually during our discussions that, uh, we had with, uh, supervisor Holly Mitchell last week. I had a meeting with, uh, other mayors from the South Bay and her is that, you know, we need to do something about the homeless situation, homeless situation, LA 28, you know, all of a sudden everybody wants to clean up because the Olympics are coming. Kind of crappy to me that you have to wait for a big event like that to actually help these people who need help. But the president came up with this thing about the VA's hospital. I think VA Hospital, the VA Center that's up there in West LA, designating that as a homeless veterans, uh, service center, which provides housing, et cetera. So, I mean, exactly what we've been saying that, uh, a lot of these people that are on the street, a lot of them are homeless veterans that need somewhere to stay, services, et cetera. So, uh, hopefully this turns out to be a part of a solution to the situation that we have out there. So I'm hoping that turns out, that one turns out. So I'm really excited to see that that might, uh, uh, turn out. So let's see. So yeah, I did have a meeting with Holly Mitchell and these other mayors from the South, uh, from the South Bay. So I'm happy to let you all know that I told her that, uh, we have some great projects. Uh, we, I talked about the parks upgrades, two parks. Um, I told her about our senior center that is being built, uh, right now at the moment. I think, uh, tearing things down and starting the build process. We also have the Public Works yard that is in progress. Uh, and then that we are going to be breaking ground for the City Hall Civic Center. And everybody in that, in, in the room was just like looking at us because they're struggling with, uh, uh, deficits. Like everybody is, I don't know why they're sitting in front of the supervisor, you know, sobbing and saying that they have a deficit. If, if I had a deficit, I wouldn't be like mentioning it, right? But they were. So we don't have a deficit. But we're in very precarious situation that any bad move that we do, that it could cost us and put us in that hole. Any bad move, any excess that we have would put us in a bad situation. And now you guys heard today that we have a decrease in our grants and our sales tax. That's real and that's there. It's not imagined. So. I did attend as a board member for the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. I did attend, uh, a institute on Latina economic mobility. So of course the theme was Latina, but many of the ideas that were there affect, uh, people of color in, in our city. People of color and people within our city. Of course, we have that balance, we have that, uh, contrast with a lot of the engineers that are working for SpaceX and a lot of those, uh, you know, high-level peoples here that are here to support aerospace locally. But we also have an element in our community that's, uh, community that's in need and, uh, looking for opportunity to be able to remain in Hawthorne and to be able to obtain, uh, those opportunities. So, uh, it was a great opportunity to share what the city of Hawthorne is doing when it comes to all these different things that we do. One thing that I did want to mention was, uh, I think it was brought up that, uh, we're going to be upgrading the soccer, soccer, we're going to be placing an official soccer field over here at the Eucalyptus Center. You know, Eucalyptus Park. And we have other facilities like the Foot Cell. Okay? I have a very deep concern and I just need, we, we just need to correct this because we have a lot of people who are not Hawthorne residents who are trying to rent these, these people, these, uh, places. And I get a lot of complaints from residents saying, you know, there's no, there's not openings. And they're Hawthorne residents, Hawthorne groups. And so I think we need to be very careful who we rent these out to and give a priority to Hawthorne residents and Hawthorne groups. And when I say Hawthorne. And when I say Hawthorne groups, it doesn't mean that the director lives in Hawthorne and everybody else is from like Manhattan Beach and Redondo Beach because they don't want to bother those pools over there in Manhattan Beach and El Segundo, the Wiseburn thing, the Wiseburn Pool over there. Why they build that, you know, for the community? And most of those people that are using ours are from Wiseburn, you know? Send them emails. Complain to them. Go to the Wiseburn School District, complain to them. Why aren't they offering you those opportunities? It's your tax base. Go get it. Especially because those people live within that area that the tax base contributed to building that pool. All right? The onus is not on us. But I think we need to be careful who we rent this out and Kwanah and Vaughn or whoever, just be very conscious of that and just let's just try to prioritize and just be fair to our residents. I don't want it to be locked out. I want them to have opportunity. So, this other last item originated when I called a couple of times to get assistance from our staff in our administrative office and actually in the Public Works Department a couple of times. And it concerns me when I call and I try to reach people that should be in their office to be able to help me with things, but they're out of the city, taking, taking care of events. They're in planning meetings for events and they're not accessible to me. So, this was coincidentally during that time, I had two people complain about how long their permits were taking to process permits. Permits that should be taking a week or two, taking a month, month and a half, or they haven't received any calls. People are calling, trying to reach these people. They're not in their office because they're out there busy taking care of other things. So, I hate to mention this, but it's something we have to address. Also, because I'm concerned about what we heard today, the sales tax has decreased. So, we need to be careful when it comes to our overtime pay. And in addition, we have burnout from our employees. They've mentioned it to me in passing. They want to be very careful. They don't want to upset people up here on the council dais. So, I'm very concerned that this event planning has exceeded, you know, its its level of moderation, that we have excess. Employees are being taken away from their tasks. And in the last two or three years, I've been receiving a lot of complaints, as I mentioned, like a lot of slow permitting issuance, slow completion of tasks, lack of availability, people answer their phones. And like I mentioned, staff privately expresses frustration. I mean, the reality is people sign up here to do what? To do their job description. Event planning, event staffing is not part of those job descriptions. Our residents really deserve to be, their needs met and their concerns addressed. So, that's why I would like to ask as my second directive, Mr. City Manager, if you could perform an overnight overtime study combined with the staffing study on the events that we've had for the last two years, however long that takes, on the number of people that have staffed events here within the city and the costs. And if you could include incidental information, incidental costs as well. And I just really think we just got to really have a serious conversation about events. I mean, we're Hawthorne, for God's sake. We're a working-class community. We're not, we're not a Beverly Hills necessarily. We aspire to be, but we just really need to take a serious look at all these. I just don't want to talk about it today. Okay? But we have a birthday. Councilwoman Angie Race English, I know you love your sisters. Is it who? Is it your sister's birthday? All right. So, we just want to just wish Councilwoman Angie Race English's sister a very happy birthday.
Yeah, my sister Linda. I think she shares a birthday with your mom, right, city clerk?
Oh, yeah. I met your mom. She's wonderful. So, wishing her a happy birthday. Okay?
Thank you for that.
All right. So, anything else? Nothing further from council? Meeting's adjourned at 10:11.